Welcome. I'd like to call to order the September 7, 2021 County Rhinebeck Planning Board meeting. And I welcome everybody who's still in the process of coming in and signing in. Thank you for your cooperation. I believe you have all, I don't believe we have any changes to the posted meeting agenda. I think that stands as it was created. Is that correct? Any changes? I would like to announce at this time that, starting today, we did our pre-conference meetings via Zoom again. We've been requested to do so by the town. You may know that Governor Hochul has reinstated legislation allowing virtual meetings. And that legislation, I believe, continues in force until January 22nd. So because of the inability to really notice over the holiday weekend, we only received this information late last week, chose to go ahead with the in-person meeting tonight. But henceforth, at least until the end of December, possibly through the January 22nd day, we will be conducting all business of the planning board virtually. So that information will be posted on the town website. Those of you who wish to come to future meetings, watch the meetings, comment on the meetings, please access that information and participate in any way that you feel is important. Of course, letters to the planning board will always be accepted. You don't have to be in person to be able to comment on applications. Anything else on that, Jim?
No, I think we're covered.
Okay. You've all received the planning board members, I assume, Jim's meeting notes. And so I have a motion to accept the meeting notes as submitted.
So moved.
So I move by Kathy second. Michael, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. We've also received the minutes of the August 16th meeting. Haven't had a chance to review them. Any comments, corrections? I have a motion to accept them as submitted. So I'll move Delise second.
Second, Sean.
Second, Sean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. All right, well, we also have received some correspondence that I would ask Jim to share with you. Some of you may know that we have been working with a grassmere applicant for some time. And some of you may have noticed the personal work taking place on Route 9, and we thought we would update you with what we know about that. Jim?
So we received some information that what is currently going on at the site is work that was approved under Phase 1A by the planning board several years ago. The work that's taking place right now is to put in foundations and four of the cabins on site, and also work related to the New York State DRT highway permit. The permit was actually issued to them on July of this year. So that's the work that you see going on out there. The DRT permit does allow them to do a little bit of tree clearing along the right-of-way of Route 9, some grading for the entrance in general for access into the site. So that's what you see happening along Route 9 currently on the site. They do anticipate submitting in October to the planning board for revised plans to further work on development of the grassmere site. So they anticipate taking a look at that submission when it comes in, and then getting a place on the agenda sometime thereafter.
Really, if there's anything else we have to go over preliminarily? So I'll open the meeting now with new applications. My first up is Susan St. Clair for Mount Wexon Road for the addition of a small. Susan?
Hi.
Would you please come to the microphone and present your application to the planning board? Jim will put up what he has to help you through it.
So, um, hi. So I currently have a sliding door out the back of my house, and there's some existing steps coming out. So what I'm looking to have done is put a 10-foot claw, so covers the, the 10-foot is what encompassed the door, and then six feet coming out, so that I have room to just put like a chair or something like that out to that. I think I had submitted also the recommendation when I did the pre-application meeting to send in a photo as well from the road, because I don't even believe that there's gonna be anything visible from the road, because the deck again only comes out six feet. Sorry, it's sideways. It only comes out six feet from the back of the door. Yeah, you can just see the house on the top, top there, so. I don't know what else you want. So I did request in my cover letter a waiver according to the stipulations that you're allowed to do based on the scope of the project being very small. And so I, you know, just request the waiver be accepted. So I can see the documents. I don't know if you have any questions. Hopefully I answered everything.
Um, Michael, you were at the pre-conference meeting on this. Perhaps you'd like to comment on the application?
Yeah, I also did review today. Work, it's maybe six by 10 feet, absolutely. It has actually no environmental impact whatsoever. It's, it's here before us because of the way the law is written, but it certainly doesn't know any environmental issues whatsoever. No question.
Any questions from members of the board? As Michael alluded to, and I think as Susan has indicated she applied for, we do have the ability to waive, consider, waive the public hearing.
We may want to do that just by motion of the board.
Right. And I believe you, Jim, have already, the draft, we have a draft approval resolution, which was, or the procedural, oh, we have the draft procedural resolution. I got my pages all mixed up. Page two, my own. So we have a draft procedural resolution. The planning board acting as follows. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for the review, classifies the proposed action as a type-two superaction for which coordinating environmental quality review is procured, waives the site plan review requirements as the planning board has determined that submission of complete site plan application materials is not necessary for the installation of steps and a landing at the rear of this house. The planning board hereby utilizes the authority granted in Section 12577 F2 with site plan submission requirements, and moves to immediately consider the draft approvals resolution. So with this resolution, you're asking us to move ahead to consider the draft approval resolution. So could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Motion by Michael, second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? The motion varies. And then also posted was the draft approval resolution. I'm not going to go through and read all that with your permission, but that again just allows us to move ahead with it, so it's here before you. So could I have a motion to accept the draft approval resolution? So, oh, I've got motions all over the place in seconds, so Gretchen, take your pick. I think at this point I'll pull the board, because this is a special situation, Michael.
Aye.
Delise?
Hi.
Aye.
Kathy?
Hi.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I assume Gretchen will let me know what the next ones are. All right, thank you very much.
So because we're so efficient, we have a few minutes that we have to wait until 6:45, or we can begin our public hearings. And as life would have it, we have no zoning referrals, so just gonna have to sit. Enjoy each other's silent company. Public hearing. That is for the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, 34 Wharton Drive, the applications for site plan and special use permit, and the converted use to a nursery school.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Victoria Polidoro here on behalf of Rhinebeck Community Nursery School and the community at Brookmead. I think I submitted an application for site plan and special permit approval for an accessory use to replace the fitness center in the pavilion with a nursery school. There will be no exterior changes to the building. At the last meeting, the issue of a safe play area was raised by Mr. Levy and other members of the board. And tonight, I do have a letter from the pavilion at Brookmead indicating that the nursery school is allowed to use the fenced play areas for their outdoor recreation, the soccer fields. The soccer fields. And so I'll give that to the board.
Do you want to point those out for the folks here who might not be familiar with the location of the soccer fields?
Oh, thank you. So you actually have to go, yeah, out. The soccer fields are gonna be up here. And see, this is the fence area. So they'll be able to walk using the existing pedestrian lanes, safe crossing, and get some steps. And that's where parents can pick up.
That's where parents can pick up?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, you know, we all have trouble.
They'll be able to pass here, and then pick up the kids just at the soccer field.
So the children will be dropped off?
They'll be dropped off at the pavilion.
At the pavilion, and then walked out and picked up at the soccer fields at the end of their period of time with you?
Yes. And those are, as I said, it's completely fenced, and so they'll, they'll be just as safe as the kids using the soccer fields.
Just to clarify, in case in the weather, I assume they'll be picked up at the pavilion, same way they drop off?
Correct, correct. They do try to get them outside in the snow, but in the rain, it would be a good. And the pavilion had, I believe, 92 parking spaces when it was constructed, with four of them dedicated just to the fitness center use. So those four will now be transferred to the nursery school, and there was two extra spaces that they added. So there's additional spaces, as well as some drop-off spots.
And how many permanent staff are there open?
Great, great.
Anything else?
Not unless the board has any questions.
Was there a site to read?
Yes, Joe.
Like make a report?
I mean, I will say, I was really happy to see, I know originally there was concern of the road and access. Way, as you can see, still on the screen, is a really quiet area. The building is pretty much empty at this point. It's not being used. It's a beautiful building. They've done a really nice job for set up. And you know, it works. Also showed me some really great ropes and things that brought me back to when my children were young. Get everyone around safely to where they need to be. I think there's a lot of care and thought.
Any, any comments or questions from other members of the planning board? Okay, so we'll open it up to public hearing. May I say that we have received many, many, I don't even wanna count them at this point, letters from, I assume, parents and grandparents and others who value this resource in the community, and are encouraging our approval, and appreciate your weighing in and giving us your opinion. I'm not gonna read them all. They all pretty much said the same thing. I don't know if anyone's here to speak in person. If you have submitted a letter, I would encourage you to let your letter stand as your comments. But if there are people here who have not submitted a letter and would like to make public comment, I would invite you to do so now.
Perhaps you can ask if those in favor of approval will just stand and let us know if that's why they're here.
Sure. If you would like to raise your hands, or, you know, stand up and show your support. Yeah, it would be a very quiet meeting. I, thank you very much. And again, thank you. And I know personally the good work of the Community Nursery School, so I'm sure it will continue in its new location. That being said, if there are no other comments from either the planning board or the public, we can move directly to the draft approval resolution. Oh, it's, it's, okay, so let's have a motion. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Delise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Turn down the motion passes. So for members of the planning board, it's a little out of order, but on page 12 is the draft approval resolution. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing. It has been posted. But I would like to, in particular, read paragraph three, which refers back to the original approvals. With respect to the application for special use permit to authorize use of existing space that brings it Brookmead for childcare use, finds the intended nursery school use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in the Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12567. Finds that the intended use is permitted within the already constructed and approved Brookmead facility, specifically because the accessory use of a nursery school has been noted by the applicant as providing a direct amenity and benefit to the existing Brookmead senior community by involving some level of integration of activities between the nursery school accessory use and the senior living support functions that are the principal and previously approved use of the site. By way of reference herein, we note that the use is generally consistent with the application letter from Optimus Architecture dated January 31, 2017, for the proposed construction of the structure to be utilized by the nursery school, but effectively stated that services to be provided within the structure are directly focused on those that provide use and benefit of and for residents, as well as a very few specific potential community functions. So I just want to be sure that we understand that because of the relationship between you and the programming that you've developed, that is why this is able to go forward at this time. So I would entertain a motion to approve the draft of those.
So moved.
Sorry, Jim.
I'll pull the board. Michael?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
All right, thank you so much.
We don't always get applause. We'll take it when we get it.
They are hoping to open for September 14th, so will you be available to sign plans or sign the set?
Uh. I, I leave my location on the tip. So if it comes in tomorrow, or if it comes in Thursday, I'll make sure that I get it signed.
Thank you. We'll get it together. Thank you so much.
Good luck. Thank you, everyone, and thanks for your involvement. Next up, Thomas Daniels, 8 Slate Dock Road, improvements to the property's site plan and special use permit.
Why don't you start? Okay, so I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna let the other half speak as well. So my name is Tom Daniels. We're here on 8 Slate Dock Road. So my wife and I have been part of the community for the past over 15 years, since we bought a place in Rhinebeck at 22 Horn Street. And it was a beautiful property. It was on one acre by, by a paper road, and we were able to kind of build a really, really fun place there, and we wound up spending a lot of time up here. This, this whole area means a lot to us. Our son was married by Louis Sanchez. We had the reception at the local. We run dozens of 5Ks, 10Ks, marathons up here, and we just really love the area. So we are not, so we wound up spending probably over half the time during the pandemic up here at our place. We realized it was probably not big enough. So we found what we think is one of the most beautiful properties ever at 8 Slate Dock. And so we bought it, and we're really excited about it, and we're not architects or engineers, and we wanna do the right thing. So we're here, and we're looking forward to getting input from the community. I will tell you that both my wife and I are huge lovers of the outdoors. I grew up in Alaska. I went to school in New Hampshire. I was really active in the dark about it, but we're very active in Central Park Conservancy. So we wanna preserve as much as we can as well, but we also wanna be respectful of the community. So with that, my wife of 33 years, we'll talk about it.
You're married, what are your questions? Hi, I'm Donald Daniels. I have the what's on, as you said, we bought a place up here in 2007. We did a very significant amount of work. It really did not particularly well, and it turned into such a beautiful place. We probably first came up here in the early 2000s, and there was something about the area that immediately drew us to it. It was, it was artistic. It was, it was farm-to-table. It was relaxing and elegant, and we loved the people. And as you said, during COVID, my daughter, my daughter, who's in the audience, spent a lot of time here. My son and his wife, we all were there for, you know, six to eight weeks, and we love our house, but we did realize it's small, and the walls aren't very thick, and, you know, going forward as we hope to have grandchildren, you know, it would be great to have a larger place, and we saw this spectacular place on the river. And so we are working to make it blend as, as well as we can in its surroundings, and keep the integrity of the property, because that's what, what drew us to it. One thing we don't have on the property that seems to never have been there is a garage. And so that is something we're looking to build, is we do want a garage with, with our house. We, we have cars. And, you know, we plan to keep one up there. We live in the city. I don't think we mentioned that. We live in the city on the Upper West Side. We both work there. And what we learned during COVID, you know, that gave us the ability to spend so much time up here and realize that, you know, this, this is a great place to be, and I don't think for a long time we're gonna go back to having to be in our offices, and, you know, retirement is, is not all that far away. Our son and his wife love this. You know, they, they stopped here yesterday. They're looking someday to buy, to buy places as well. So that's, you know, that's why we're here. I mean, in terms of the garage, it's something that we want to make it as least disruptive as possible to the property. We want it to be practical, you know, so that it's near the house, particularly because we know what the Rhinebeck weather's like in the winters. You know, but we're also conscious of, again, that it's a, you know, everybody enjoys the land here. And so we wanna work and make this happen. You know, we, we've been very thankful for Robert and others who've been helpful, and we know that we've already had some considerations about the property. So we're here to answer any questions and just, I mean, let you know, you know, that we're super excited and honored to, you know, to be able to build and have this spectacular piece, and we have a vision, and we have a budget. So we're, you know, again, we're trying not to be incredibly disruptive in terms of moving things. We wanna keep vegetation, but, you know, some things will have to happen, some things will have to change, so that we can have a, a larger house and, and a garage.
That's pretty close. First, Robert, my engineer, you can't go wrong following the nursery school. The nursery school that just got approved, so we're, we're up to great growth. So I'm representing the Daniels, and by the way, I would say I'm a huge advocate for people who pretend they're part-time, convincing them they should be full-time, and, and many of our friends and new neighbors are. The Daniels feel like full-timers, although they assure me they do visit the city once in a while still. So this is our, our first public hearing opening. We've done, boy, we've talked a lot. I've talked to a number of you. I've gotten advice from people on how to handle what we think is straightforward to some degree as a development on an existing building. We understand and appreciate that it's in the Rhinebeck, Overland District. It's, it's within 1,000 feet of the river, so it requires a special use permit. Hence our, our introduction to the board and our hope to, to expedite the approval process. We also realize what we're doing, we're developing a site. It's a very petite, little existing house that's many decades old. And, and it is smaller, in fact, and in very poor shape, but smaller than, than what the Daniels live in now. So our, our plan is to replace it with a larger house, a three-bedroom house, and to add a, a garage, as Donna noted. So, and thank you. This is, let's see, that's the existing house in elevations, and it'd be great, actually, even more funny than these are the photos. I took a couple of great photos that show the existing house pretty well, and actually that a photo that shows, a drone photo that shows, gives you a picture of what goes on around the house. So, let's see, just, just to note, some bookkeeping, notifications, we took care of notifications to the neighbors. I think all very successful, with the exception of maybe one. That was two. They were tentative deliveries two or three times, but I think we did a pretty good job posting a sign, posting in the newspaper. Slides, if you could go, I think there are, Jim, three, four photos.
Of these?
Uh, no, these are.
I'll get a photo.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Now, you know, that, that photo right there, can you zoom in on the upper photo? That speaks to, I don't wanna say the complexity of the site, but along the top, from left to right, hidden in the trees, is 1rd Road. The house on the left is 4 Slate Dock. The owners are here tonight. The house on the right is, can you, can you tell me the number? 289? 389 Rhinebeck Road. So those two houses are, I'm sorry, the one house is accessed on the right from Rhinebeck Road. 4 Slate Dock, all the way on the left to the swimming pool, is accessed from Slate Dock Road. The Daniels' house is in the, is in the foreground, and it's accessed from a driveway that goes left from this road. What we're proposing to do is replace that house, the, the one in the center, if you will. And the new house will, will stretch, let me say, slightly bigger. It goes to the left five or 10 feet. The plan showed clearly, and it goes to the right 25 feet. So the massing of the house is, is, is longer than it is right now. I mean, if I, if I, this house may be rebuilt, will be turned 90 degrees to face the river. It does have a little porch now, so it's a cute little house, but our intention is to replace it. One of the, let's see, I might, maybe another photo or two. Jim, could you pull up the JPEGs?
There's a laser plant.
Wow. So what, I think my early recommendation to the Daniels, after I said, hey, this is a great property, but no, you can't just build, there is no site plan approval. We need to go to planning boards. That was shocking, and they're still a little shocked, but they're hopeful, which is really all we need. But I also said, hey, I, I know your neighbors, and I think it's a smart idea to, to introduce yourself, instead of being those homeowners who don't wanna talk to anyone, they just wanna build their house. And in fact, it's not the Daniels. They, they did introduce themselves and met on a few occasions with the Barron's. The Barron's families, both, both sides are the Barron's, two different families. This is a photo taken from the driveway, the existing driveway of 8 Slate Dock. So this is the house we want to remove. And if you go to the next couple pictures, this one's a great picture, but we This one's a great picture, but we're going to dwell on that. Okay, that, that is, we, we are concerned with and have approached David directly to say, hey, we're going to build a garage. We just want you to know and to know where it is. In fact, the two families met and talked about it. And, and I think shared their, their concerns and criticisms and wants and needs pretty, pretty openly. So we're looking at Forest Lake Dock. The back of the house faces north and west. So I'm looking at, I'm looking to the east. In fact, though, from the second floor and, and David was kind enough to take a few pictures from his second floor, from his back deck, that we could use to, to address Melanie's concern when she visited us onsite and said, hey, I'd like you maybe to show us a view and a perspective. So we, we don't have any kind of a view or rendering prepared. But we don't expect the planning board to close the public hearing and tell us to go get a permit. We're hoping instead to learn, maybe to communicate more with the neighbors, to make any adjustments. And to come back to you and show you what those, I hope, small adjustments would be. But otherwise, to hear from the planning board what, what else they might need besides archaeological investigation in order to prepare for a successful second public hearing. So in fact, what I'm not able to show you because I didn't provide photos or didn't get them early enough to provide before is a view from the back porch of Forest Lake Dock. In fact, they have a, there, there is a view from the second floor in this direction. And the, the maybe more open view is the way the, the house faces, the rear of the house faces northwest and is a clean, clean shot to the river. Divided, I like to think of this, two different views by a very huge maple tree that the Daniels want very much to keep. And in fact, I've spent, actually in their current property and, and now on this property, I've worked with Days Tree Service to clean up, to maintain, to remove dead stuff. In fact, they even got a nice picture of a dead bush right there. We missed that one. So I think otherwise, we could talk about the house, but it's a 3,000 square foot house, 3,000 plus. The Daniels were very much like a garage. They recognize two things, that it's an accessory structure being located in the front yard, which makes it a zoning variance. But I would report it to the planning board and eventually we'll get the opportunity in October to talk to the zoning board that the neighbors on the south, on the east, and on the, and on the north, I'm not showing this picture, all have garages in their front yard. It's, it's kind of a, it, it's the only way to put a garage on most of these properties. Like, otherwise, I need to put it down as home near the river. But all of these properties have garages in their front yards. So I think we're in a silly way consistent and, and hopefully, and hope to do something that's attractive and, and appropriate for the property. So first to the planning board, do you have any questions for us?
I'd like first to ask for a report on the site visit.
The site visit was well-attended.
Well, I was gonna ask Kathy to respond.
Oh, sorry.
You know, I'm wondering, did you, you will be providing what we asked for, which, if I heard you correctly, the views from the neighbors down onto where the garage is likely to be and the house itself. Did we not ask for renderings of what those view shifts would look like?
On site, Molly asked me and I said, gosh, I don't know that I'm gonna, you know, put a rendering together for this either. But yes, I think what I'd like to do is take the photographs that David provided and, and, and draw this, the, you know, it's not going to be, it's not my intention to win an art contest, but I want to show you what might be called a mock-up. And further, we'd like to, my to-do action includes having a surveyor stake the corners of the house and maybe putting a pole up so, so David sees. So neighbors see, the planning board can see where it is really.
Well, I think when you look at the photographs, particularly that view, you know, you said, let's not dwell on, but you know, what becomes very obvious is that what's, what's open there now when the garage is located on that hill. You know, I want to know what the neighbors are going to see from their backyard. So if you want to take your pointer and, and yes, that is exactly where I believe the garage is going to go, right? Avoiding the maple tree. So what I think Kathy and I are talking about is what is the back of that garage? How much of that is going to be visible from the neighbors? What are they going to see? I think it's really important that we explore that because it is clearly going to change the characteristics of that, of that prominent part of the property. So I think it's important that we examine that and we know what that impact is going to be to the neighbors there.
So we, we, my list of solutions, I had six or eight. But, but actually, as, as in response to the neighbors, we've talked about trying to lower the garage. It's tough. I think this is a rocky subject.
It's very rocky. And I think that will come up. I think Michael has a question about that.
Also to push it back right up against the setback limit. You know, I even said, and Donna said, no, you know, we bought a house and we really want a garage. This is one of, everyone wants a garage. The neighbors have garage. I said, get rid of the garage. Get rid of, they don't have to go to the variance. They, they feel like that's not, that's not, I think it's fair and reasonable to put a two-car garage and I agree with them. So what we want to do instead is come to a reasonable, I don't, I don't know that the law says you can't block anyone's view, but I would say the Daniels have been very cognizant of this fact. And they've asked me, like, what do you think could be here, could be there? Can we push it back a little bit? And, and we're working on that. We, we hope to, to do what's most reasonable. Interesting, that picture. Can you go back to that picture, Jim? The a couple of the, this tree right here, this huge fir blocks most of the view. Really, the view is from, is, is from about here over to the other big maple. There's like a slot right through there. So one of the ideas is just to try and push the garage in this direction. It's tricky, though. It's a funny spot. They're trying to develop with least disturbance on top of the hill. And, and they recognize that anything they do drastically different just gets more expensive. So we'll go through that process.
Anything else, Kathy, from the site? Or a number of pieces?
We need that information and whatever your solutions are in order to respond in a meaningful way. So I should point out that we're helping.
Well, I think the other major comments that took place on the site visit related to archaeology and the significance of the property, both in terms of potential Native American artifacts and also the docks that were down below. So I, I, I'm gathering that you are engaging an archaeologist or you're somewhere along in that process?
We are. And of course, I'm worried that, that no one's available fast enough, which is disheartening. But yes, we, we heard your request. We will conduct an archaeological investigation. The docks, I know there are these special docks, but it's, it's a property away. Like, do, do you really want us to?
No, you only need to be investigating the areas of the property that you are proposing to disturb it.
Right.
I mean, I just point out that fact because the whole area is disturbed. And so, but your responsibility is to be areas that you are proposed to disturb.
Interestingly, I, I've learned that more information for archaeological and historic will come along soon. But when I went to, for instance, Dutchess County Parcel Access, there's nothing listed on these houses. Closer into the Hamlet, there are some longer write-ups about properties. So I guess we, we did go in the library. We'll go back to the Historic Society and see if they can help us dig for any information.
Did Nancy Kelly not find something about the dock? I think she did.
We talked about it on site.
Yeah, I think, you know, she's a great resource.
She is.
Somebody that would be wonderfully helpful for you.
And once that's received, we will cycle that back to Dr. Wentworth, who was the archaeologist on the HAPAC committee. She was on the site visit. And she'll review it and make recommendations based on the report.
Okay.
Michael, you had a question?
Robert, one of the, one of the neighbors broke my attention with a question about, as you point out, it's very rocky there. And if the basement isn't going to be put in or anything of that sort, we'd be having to blast to create that space.
I would say we would do whatever is least disturbing to neighbors. I've seen people hammer for weeks. And I think that's silly when you can blast for one or two days. I, I do think we'll remove rock. I think it's necessary.
I think we'll need to know that. And it may be something we may pass on to our, our engineer, our consultant, who will just let us know what enterment back. If it is something that the neighbor should be concerned about, because all of that area on Rhine Cliff is rock.
Yes.
Everyone knows. And it's not as if there's any spoilings in between different outcrops that might, to some, to some extent cushion. I mean, I, I mean, I built this step house and I had to blast the whole foundation, but thank God knowing the surroundings.
Right.
I mean, it was, you know, we've never done it before. It's really, it's a lot of fun. It's not something you want to do with neighbors nearby who have wells, who have foundations, things like that. If it's in any condition such as well, it could potentially be seriously damaged.
Or improve that.
I'm sorry?
I said, or improve.
Well, not foundation, probably.
No, no, no. I, I mean wells. I'm joking.
Actually, they have a lot of water in that area. I think this house also has village water. Don't they down there? Does the water not go down? It goes to Rhine Cliff. If they not have public water.
This house does not have public water.
Does.
We do have public water. You would think so with the, with the treatment plant close by.
Well, you would, well, yeah. But that was a question that did come up. So as we look forward, we're going to want to know exactly, this is something that might have to be done. So we can refer it to our engineer, just so we can ensure that, that, that we, you know, letting kids, the neighbors might have to rest as any potential damage to their properties.
I think a, a quick answer to that is any, any actions we take, especially something special like blasting. We would talk to the neighbors and everyone would know, understand, and be comfortable with whatever provisions.
I, I just want, if, if I'm understanding, Michael, his concern is not with the noise.
No.
Although that is a concern. Damage to property.
It's damage to property. And I, and I would say that I would, if, I would, you would work, at work that out from an engineering perspective earlier rather than later, because I think we will be, if, if you are intending to do that, we will be referring it to Ranger Cowsby. So that will add another, another step in the review process. And, you know, if you can do that, if that can be done concurrently with your work in archaeology, then you're serving yourself time. So determining that fact
Right.
earlier rather than later will help expedite the review.
I mean, you have regulations in the zoning law, given the preparation seeds of that sort. So there is some, it's not necessarily the test in the world, but there is some.
Now, another method, you know, I've done, I've done a fair amount of excavation work is drilling and splitting. You drill the same hole and you put expansive material in, or it is mechanical.
Yeah.
Expansion.
There are a number of ways to do it. You just want to make sure that the way it is done, wherever it is done, poses a threat to the neighbors.
Now, this site lends itself to lots of things. Most of the contractors, locators would just hammer away for $400 an hour for a couple of weeks.
Well, we'll leave that choice to you, to decide what you, what you would like the most.
We'll be clear with what we're up to, how we propose.
Anything else from?
I just have a general question, just from like a, obviously a consideration, neighbors is without say, but from a, from a law standpoint, what is the limitation to blocking someone's view?
I think the.
I'm just curious.
The code for Rhine Cliff has discussions of not blocking other people's views with new construction and conditions and things like that. That's part of the special permit criteria. That's something specific to Rhine Cliff. And that's kind of the criteria we review against, you know, something like this. So you just do, we think it's a creative issue. If so, how to mitigate it or.
And largely because Rhine Cliff is such a compact and tight, small neighborhood.
Right.
Is this actually, this house is in Rhine Cliff? Is that the difference?
Pardon?
The house is in Rhine Cliff.
Well, I think the Rhine Cliff overlay district goes to those that.
It's in, it's in Rhine Cliff, but it's in the Rhine Cliff overlay. I think the, what they call policy 248, which is referenced, speaks to when you look at what can you do, what shouldn't you do? It seems the emphasis on development on the river to do things appropriate, I could go grab the sheet and read it, but to cluster houses and put them in such a style that it's appropriate. Not to block access to the river, to be conscious of your lighting and your site development. And I think, I don't think it, it says, don't block your neighbor's view, but it talks about views. And I take it to mean general public views, like, don't put a fence up and block this otherwise beautiful view that everyone driving down Rhine Cliff path. I would say that driving down Rhine Cliff, because I'm also a commuter. Many times over the last few months, I've stopped in the road and inched forward and inched forward. And I'm always trying to get the right high-tone picture. It's, it's just a tremendous amount of vegetation in there, kind of separating all three properties. So there isn't really a view for the public. The, the view we're most interested in and being considered of is Forest Lake Dock. So.
If there's something else from the planning board, I would open it up to, I think Jim's checking something.
Um, I'm sorry, something. Have you applied to the ZDA for the Barron's yet?
We have not because the, the cycle is such that we wrote it down. October 4th, agenda close date for October 22nd, ZDA. So that's what we're.
You'll like to get that material into them regardless of.
By October 4th. Right.
Make sure to get it into.
They need to meet more often than we do.
Or we need to meet less. That's a joke.
I have a question for you. We, we have every intention of building a, a two-car garage. Can we split this up and file for the house with no variance? And then move forward with the garage on a separate permit? I just fear that otherwise, it'll be January and we'll be talking about the same things that are, I think.
Does the garage also include an apartment or a rest facility as well?
It has a guest, it has a bedroom in the second floor, so it's a guest house.
And so with the, with the rest room, things like that.
Yes.
And then that becomes an accessory dwelling, which is a little more significant because of course you accept it. Everything else has to accommodate that. So I would be reluctant to do that. That would be somewhat problematic.
I would think so. I, I think this is such a small parcel.
Yeah.
It really, it warrants review all at the same time.
I think your discussion with the neighbor, I understand what you're saying about, that's really the view you're concerned about. Slate Dock, the Rhine Cliff Road, I don't think all this is all, is it money? And I think the best thing to do is to discuss with that neighbor, so if you can, if you can jod the house over those, or so, behind that fir tree.
Right.
Whatever species that was. Something like that, if you can come to a agreement with them, I think that's really significant for them. Move ahead and be able to do the project all together because you don't want to have to go back and maybe change the set system. Maybe do more on the ground work for, you know, water, for sewer, things like that.
And we've talked about not only trying to push the garage, but to enhance the view, the other half of the view around the maple tree. And, and I think some efforts have already been made to do some clearing. But we're, we're going to see what else we can.
Yeah, I think that's, I personally, I guess, your best bet, because I think if you and the neighbors can come to a agreement on that, you know, what looks best for everybody, everybody's satisfied. I think that themselves, any problems you're there with, the ZDA, the variance, the garage.
Sure.
That's a relative thing.
The other thing I would point out with a garage, which I know will become evident when we see further plans, is you know, you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor, which, which will, you know, which will have lighting in the interior at night, you know, so we're going to, we want to be looking at any lighting that's going to be spilling from the garage and the accessory dwelling unit into the neighbors' yards as well. Are there exterior lights that are going to be affecting their property? So that, I think, all needs to be revealed as you move forward with the exact location
Sure.
and, and the lighting plan for it. Anything else from the planning board?
I, I did one more question, all because I've seen other people do this. Were they, so maybe this is not even an option for Rhine Cliff, but when people put larger, when they get septics approved that are larger and they do a phase, right? They get like a, whatever it is, four bedroom subjects, whatever they might be, they build only a three-bedroom house in case they decide to develop that later. Is that an option in a situation like this?
We have approval for a six, six-bedroom septic system. And in fact, the SAN 34 is faxed to the Rhine Cliff Building Department generally.
Which we're just off the planet. So that there's just awareness to the whole visual effect. And questions of blasting and other things that are part of the application. Jim, did you find something you wanted to share?
Well, just because it was mentioned, regarding building height, it is specifically in the code for the RCO. It says that the building height shall be subject to review to, to the extent to which it will block existing views from surrounding property. It is in the RCO. So it is a specific element of the planning orders to review.
Luckily, our main building isn't blocking any views, but thank you. Luckily, our main building isn't blocking any views, but thank you.
Well, it's a main building, it's building heights.
Got it. So, and again, we know the garage is sensitive, we want to do what we can.
I'd like, at this point, if there's nothing more from the planning board, to open it up to the public. Yes, please come forward and identify yourself and speak in the microphone.
I'm Robert Norman. I live at 403 Rock Cliff Road, which is just south of the subject box. And you have spectacular cars and you, it's gorgeous. Right down there. So you see I'm not far. Your southern border line, northeastern border. You touched on a couple of things that I have a concern with. And I'm sure they'll be properly addressed at some point, but the blasting or the use of explosives on this parcel, anywhere the Daniels are, coming down, this is a ridge. Probably giving its name to Rock Cliff. But we're perched, all of us there, on this rock ridge. And my concern, my fear, is that any blasting that's done, this is all contiguous rock. This isn't just rocky soil, but, you know, boulders stuck here or there. If there's blasting, the seismic effect is going to traverse north and south on that ridge. And that's what I, I don't want to wake up one morning and find out, not only go have a river view, but I've got a, I'm on a river. It's just, it's a area that we have to be extremely careful with the process of that. And the other thing I noticed, and Robert and some of the papers you filed, talking about a three-south, thousand-square-foot house with another 300 feet square.
500 feet per hour.
500, well, no, on the deck or something outside of the house itself. But it had three stories, if you will, including the lower level, of a thousand square feet. And I was thinking, how, what's going to be done on that lower level? And does that lead to some of this removal of rock or the blasting or whatever that might be envisioned? Because I didn't see where that thousand feet was going to come from. You know, it's on this part of the drawing, there are rooms and there are stairs and all of that. And then it's like a, just a caved something here. And my question to myself was, what's going to go there and how are they going to remove that? That's not a clear.
The expectation is that it's crawl space or unescalated.
Okay, that's not going to be, that's not going to work.
Correct. And again, in fact, to address, it could be that the rock that we encountered, which is not always clear or easy to foresee, it could be cost prohibitive, in which case I tell the Daniels, the home office downstairs isn't a creative activity, it's the garage. It could be that the process, we learn that to limit size vibration activity, we have to drill and split, and which is very peaceful. It's very quiet. The drill, the drill is nice. You drill, and then you put material in, you split the rock away, and it can be easy. But if not, it could be that we have to limit the development. It's our hope not.
Yeah, then drill and split, to the extent I understand, it's not going to be setting seismic vibrations up and down the ridge.
It's incredibly quiet.
And so that, that doesn't bother me. What I don't want is what you see. Sometimes even in New York, I used to live on the Upper West Side. But do you see these estimations, and then they have these woven steel mats they put over something, and, you know, bland. Where is that going to go? That's what I don't want.
It's very exciting, actually, to have this. But what they do is.
I was going to ask you.
I really would like to move the public hearing along, so I don't want to debate.
Of course. I appreciate.
But if you have other comments relative to.
The blasting app part of it, and how does that relate to the 3,000, three layers of?
Okay, good.
3,000.
Anyone else here this evening that would like to make a public comment?
Hello?
Hello?
David Behrens, Forest Lake Dock Road, the one that we've talked about with the the view and, you know, what we've talked about, the second.
With the pool?
The pool, yes, we have a pool, right. So we had, we did have a meeting, or a neighborly meeting yesterday with the Daniels. Reviewed the plans, looked at the plans, everything, you know, on the main house, I think the conversations were very good. Where, you know, the voice of concern came, and we hit upon it already tonight, is the second structure, garage, studio, whatever, whatever that is. So as we were, you know, walking down the road, I liked some of the conversations, because one of the concepts that I had heard about was the possibility of, and I heard the term story pole. A story pole would be poles placed at the points of the building with flags raised to the height of whatever those, whatever that building structure is, so everybody can get a good look at that that facility with a story pole. That's the term that I heard, I saw, if that's a good word, I don't know, but that's what.
Well, beyond the story pole, I think what we're asking for is visual rendering of what we will see.
What I did, so, and the other part of the scenario, we just have the fir tree that was talked about. The fir tree is a really big, full, lush fir tree. And it is nice, because it does kind of sit in between the two houses. So, yeah, that's, that is a, it's a nice little barrier that that we do want to make sure that, I'm sure we want to, and I'm sure the Daniels want the same thing. This is a nice little barrier between the two. What I did do was I brought a couple of pictures, and I did share some pictures with Robert. I can add them and bring them to you, or submit them to you online, if that would be correct. But kind of a viewpoint from our facility outward, and kind of look out to where those, that new facility, the new second structure would be. I can leave these.
So why, I'm going to ask you to share them with Jim, and then he will be able to send them out to the entire board.
Okay. And I can put them digitally, if you prefer, if you want them digitally, I could send them to you.
Want them, Jim, digitally, we can send them to you.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, why don't we make sure we have them, Jim?
Absolutely. Card or who's?
Check with Gretchen, and she can.
I'll check with.
You get it to Gretchen, Gretchen will get it to Jim, Jim will get it to everybody, and we'll all have it.
So, yeah, I mean, the point today, I don't think it's a surprise, that from my perspective or our perspective, is the the item that we want to make sure is looked at and is reasonably reviewed further before, before, you know, pruned around with those kinds of stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we'll be continuing. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hi, this is Mike, I'm in 395 Rock Cliff Road. I just have a few questions. I've tried to read through all the materials. I think there's a limit of 2,300 square foot on houses built. Is that not true? I read it several times, but I think my concern is that in the beginning of August, you hired Dave to service. And he went back there and he weren't there to monitor it. And in my opinion, as well, Robert, they took your first tree. They can just cut down dead branches. And I'm very concerned about what you're going to do to the old growth back there when you do get your view. And we all want a view, but we don't want to kill old native trees and the other trees back there. We have these beautiful eagles that come all the time. They're not coming back. They're freaked out. Because Dave and his guys, and I'm not saying anything against him, you want a view, and Dave said he was cutting down on, you know, dead trees. And then he went on with their property, they just like slaughtered their trees. And they were telling him, yes, they did it. I'm really concerned, because based on what I'm doing here, I don't trust him. I'm really worried about the view. I'm right next door, I'm right next to Dave. And so I'm really concerned about that. Also, I thought that little house was like over 100 years old, might be historic or anything, that the Contessa lived in, or whatever famous person in Montsenue lived in. So there's no value to that house at all, and you're going to tear down the house, even though it's 100 years old. I'm just curious.
Well, there, I don't remember 100 years, so do I remember? It was built in the 30s, maybe, something like that?
It's listed as 100 years old. It was built in 19.
So we might even have a favor.
Yeah, you said it was 200 years old, I didn't think so.
I know, between 1917 and 1914.
1917, all right, so it's over 100 years old.
Kathy and I, I have the paperwork downstairs relating to this particular house in that area, and it is in historic history, but it's considered a non-construal structure.
Okay. I just want, because it's a beautiful cottage, I just wasn't sure.
All right, thank you.
So. Here's your letter. So they marked it on planes, but we actually didn't come out of this. We appreciate that, and we had heard that Mrs. Mike had concerns, and in fact, in her letter, I put a note saying we heard you had concerns, please call us, we'd love to talk and meet with you, but unfortunately, it was delivered, you know, on the evening, but it was never picked up, so we didn't have the opportunity to meet, because we would have wanted to have a conversation. I mean, okay, we can, you know, we used who we think is the best person there. We had conversations, there were dead trees. There was pruning for us to be able to see the view, which actually looked like what the property looked like when we first bought it a year ago. The maple tree, we did things to make sure that it stays as sturdy and as healthy as possible, because there's going to be construction on there, and, you know, we trusted Dave to trim it down. The eagles are there, they have been spectacular all weekend. I mean, we have about 30 pictures from the eagles yesterday and today, so they are spectacular. We are, you know, yes, there may be trimming, there's a lot, a lot there, and we will love to sit down and do have classes of lines. I think it's that next to the local ones, it's called. You know, and we have a conversation, but we will reiterate, like I said, we're huge, you know, Central Park conservancy, there's going to be pruning. You know, we, there was discussion about the trees next door with Dave and with permission and things like that. So we don't want anyone to think that we're coming in and slaying the whole thing down, but there will be pruning in that. But there was an arguing, and in Dave's view, because we had the discussion, he let us know that Ms. Mike was upset. You know, it was done appropriately, it was done properly, and nothing was done that was butchered in any way.
No, but we were under the impression in the field when we decided that there was at least one tree taken down that was not anticipated as coming down. So I think we need to be honest about that. So there are concerns, and that was acknowledged in the field, and I see you concurrent. So I think the important thing to say here is, obviously, the neighbors are concerned about the tree state in the neighborhood, and, you know, please keep that in mind as you're finalizing your plans for the garage. Certainly, it's clearly a position that a number of people share.
Right, and that's, I mean, that's why the garage, we're trying to put it there, is because it keeps, it keeps the maple, it keeps the big fir tree. The little Japanese maple, we've been hoping to move, so we can preserve that. We actually did that when we moved, when we moved from New Jersey, we brought the Japanese maples up here at Rock Cliff. 12 years later.
So we told you you can move it?
Dave? Yeah, yeah, we said it's young enough. And the other thing we would say is that we had.
But the moving of those, if you're going to be starting to rearrange the landscape, please don't just take Dave's opinion. Please make that a part of your application.
Absolutely. I mean, it's just that little red one.
I see it.
Okay. The other thing is, we had hoped to be able to keep part of the house. Unfortunately, in the inspection, the foundation failed. It was crumbling, it was full of mold, it had huge electric problems, and we were told it would, you know, it wouldn't continue to support any house. And so
Okay.
there's, you know, it was, you know, we have looked into that, because it is charming, you know, we said, can we add on to it? Can we do this? And we were told, and we have the reports, if you want, from the from the inspection, that unfortunately, the foundation was no longer stable. There was there was a lot of water in the building in the basement, and that made the stone, I guess, unsafe.
I guess I would suggest that that report, the, you know, added to what you will submit to us, that we may be referring to Rager Kowski. That would be important information for him to have, and would make his review, I think, a lot more assertive.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Don't want to miss anybody. Okay, so we will be continuing the public hearing. Robert, you talked about the dates for the zoning board of appeals. You also have not contracted with an archaeology yet. We were, I think, continuing, thinking of continuing it to October 4th, but that doesn't sound like a good date at this point.
I think it is reasonable to skip, that's being, I hope for the next.
That's on the 8th of October, or the 1st of November?
Well, if you're keeping with the month-to-month, you could go into the first one in November. And that would be what day?
November 1st.
Is that?
I think we, I think maybe November 1st is the smartest idea, so that we, our list of things, including surveys where archaeological reports get into it, so let's go with November 1st. So, yes, we could do that, or we could exchange a bunch of people, if we skip them.
So.
I think, I think I would recommend we do November 1st, and we be prepared for it.
If you do the ZDA, I mean, ZDA is a three-month process, so.
Well, hence my.
And that would have to be done before the proposal with us, so.
Well, and, you know, I want to give you enough time to remember that we like to have information in two weeks before any meeting, but also, we're going to have to cycle into this, probably, I think, most likely, referring this to Ray. So you're going to have to give yourself enough time for that to go away and come back to us.
I would appreciate. I feel like a process like this could, we could be asked to do things on the 1st, too, that are new. I would appreciate if maybe, like, none of my requests are invited. They've been verbal. I would appreciate if the board could send your list, and then we could stack all of this, and I I warn the Daniels, like, they said so, we do this, exactly what you said.
Pull that together?
I'll look with Gretchen.
All right, Jim and Gretchen will work together on that, to summarize what we're asking for this evening. Get that to you.
Thanks.
And the two-week deadline is October 18th. For materials, for additional materials.
We got it.
It was October 18th, then October 3rd.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I fear in a slowdown in process is a variance for the garage. Hence my request, that you consider letting us piece through this, with no, with nothing hidden, we just want to get started on planning to build a house and develop appropriately. I think we're building the house with a garage, which is what our neighbors have, and it's really not special from a program point of view. So if you have any suggestions, otherwise, I mean, the Daniels are here, and they're listening, and they're just thinking, we're not going to get permits to bed. And that may be true, like, if there's some other way to expedite that everyone's comfortable with, that would be wonderful.
Well, on our end, Gretchen and Jim will work together to get you the list of things.
Okay.
And we, I would entertain a motion now to continue the public hearing until November 1st at 6:45.
So moved.
So moved. Michael? Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Closed, extensions. See you on November 1st.
Thank you very much.
That will be a soon here.
Yes, it will be. Right. Right. Fair public hearing for this evening is Alderkill, Carl Duncanburg, fifteen thousand, that's a, the major subdivision. I do not see Mr. Duncanburg here. So, uh, however, it is a public hearing, and I believe there are some folks here who signed in indicating that they would like to make some public comment tonight, so I would ask you to come forward and do so. Please identify yourself. And I will remind you, we didn't put it up tonight, but we like to keep public comments between three and five minutes.
I think we do that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my name is Robert Barber, I'm a resident of Buttonwood Lane, and, uh, I'm going to comment on several issues associated with this subdivision. Uh, I'm not sure whether all your folks have reviewed the, uh, Spire Acres subdivision information. Tell you what you think we ought to, or should have, or can, or whatever. This subdivision consists of two parcels. If we draw a line down here, that's the Duncanburg property on the right-hand side. The access road, it's actually part of a different subdivision called Skyler Acres. The I have a copy of the map of Spire Acres that's dated October nineteen eighty-six. And with the both the dock and owes that subdivision as a road. The, uh, application for Alderkill is for shared driveways. Right? When the Spire subdivision was proposed and processed, they anticipated that the subdivision would occur at some point in time in the future. And the developers of Spire were required to provide an access to that subdivision in their design. The design calls for an extension of the existing Buttonwood Lane into the Duncanburg property line. It is a planned road. It was designed to be a road, and it was approved to be a road. Not a driveway. The parcel that I'm speaking about is still under the restrictions, conditions, et cetera, of the Spire subdivision. It's still a part of that subdivision. And therefore, it is required to do what the subdivision requirements specify. But then you read briefly. I also have a copy of the declaration of restrictions for the Spire subdivision. I won't read all of this, there's just a couple of points I want to make. Um, the first paragraph lists the principals who are responsible for that. I'll read the second one, whereas the undersigned desire to convey said land subject to conditions and restrictions, which are to run with the land and be binding. I won't read all the others, it's what you can put there, what you can't do, et cetera. The last paragraph is the one I consider most important. The said restriction is shown run with the land. CRW was the developer. They reserve the right to modify, cancel, annul, alter, add to, or otherwise change the said restrictions and conditions. However, any changes to be made are to be more restrictive than herein said. So it's designed and planned as a road, and the restrictions say that if you change it, it has to be more restrictive. In other words, they plan to put a road in, and if you change it, it has to be a better road. Not a driveway, a road. And all of us at Buttonwood would like this board to adhere to the restrictions and conditions that the board in nineteen eighty-six specified, and have the Alderkill subdivision required to build that as a road. There, there's one more point, uh, you have a letter from me back from the last, uh, meeting. My suggestion is do this as a road and put the cul-de-sac right on the other side of the border. And then do the shared driveways as part of the rest of the subdivision. That satisfies all the requirements for the Spire subdivisions, and allows this developer to do shared driveways in their portion. Hey, any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Barber?
The main point I'm trying to make is that parcel is still part of another subdivision, and is required to adhere to the restrictions and conditions of that subdivision.
Can I see that for just a moment? I gave you some of the, before the planning board had the responsibility of pursuing.
Well, um, thank you.
What?
I'm thanking you for providing that information.
So there's, uh, one more point.
Can we get a copy of this?
We have a copy.
I wasn't sure if it functioned.
We have caught up with that, and we have a copy of it, and obviously, we'll, I would expect at some point, have the planning board attorney take a look at that as well.
Yeah, I have just one more point, it's not shown clearly on this map, but the driveways, this is a parcel in, in Buttonwood, and the shared driveways parallel right at the property line of the Buttonwood subdivision. Uh, from my viewpoint, that's not very neighbor-friendly. This is a hundred and fifty-eighth parcel. I would prefer to see that they reposition the shared driveway away from these property lines in the interest of their neighbors. Wouldn't be too hard to do. Uh, any other question, anything, questions from you? Thank you, folks, appreciate your time.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Anyone else here to speak to the, yes, I see, I see someone in the back and someone in the front, so.
Thank you. Um, I've had more time to review the applications since our last meeting. And I think the appeal of the application is one, Carl, you know, obviously, he's a good guy, I like Carl. He's got a vision, and I think the other appeal is the subdivision. And I think at the end of the day, if we're looking at the sketch as it is, we have to think towards the future, and, you know, I don't know what's.
I'm sorry, you didn't identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Brian Benetti, I, this is a little about there, yeah. Um, at the end of the day, you know, you have to think towards the future, um, we don't know what's going to happen to Carl, maybe he'll get a really good offer for his property, he can't refuse. And then, you know, the subdivision is essentially unbuildable, right, I mean, there's, you can't put a house there, it's, there's a basically a stream cutting through the whole thing, and it's rocky and it's wet. Um, so I'm thinking that in the future, these little openings here are going to need for more development. And, you know, thinking as well, that the way they set up these parcels or, or, you know, the subdivision, a lot of them don't meet project requirements, or some of them have setback problems, they have size requirement issues, um, and a lot of this is just wetland, right, so a part of my driveway is actually on what they believe is their driveway, according to John Decker, my survey, I think we passed that along to you guys. You have to essentially pour through more wetland to get to this area, so, you know, there's a lot of, um, I guess, things that are a lot of, uh, problems with getting to these parcels, you know, by going through wetland, filling wetland, taking down trees, all that stuff, so in the end, I think, you know, we have to think about those two areas and, and further divide them and further develop them. And then, you know, as my neighbor was saying, this is a pretty small road, I think, you've been back there, right, the site visit? You know, the mouth of the road is about six, or mouth of the driveway is about sixteen feet, but really, the rest of the driveway is about twelve feet at most, and it's heavily, uh, bordered by wetland. So, you know, does this have to be a shared driveway, does it have to be a road, does it have to be a private road? All these things are kind of left up in the air. Um, and if it is a private road, isn't there a requirements in terms of right-of-way for the town and things like that? So those are things I wanted to have considered, and then again, you know, obviously, as you said before, this driveway, which is a lot of cars coming up and down, is basically on my property line, so. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Joe Wheeler, I live on Buttonwood Lake as well. Um, to add to Bernard's point, when Skyler Acres was, was developed, this parcel was left with the two hundred feet of frontage on the road at the end of the flagpole that's required for a town road. All the other flagpoles on Buttonwood only have fifty feet of frontage. This one has two hundred because it was supposed to turn into a road. When I started to look through town code, that can't be a shared driveway. Town code says no more than four lots on a shared driveway. When you look at this here, you've got six lots on that shared live driveway, you have Mr. Benetti, you have this four that are being carved off, and you have the base lot, all have access to that shared driveway, so we are into private road at this point. And per town code for private road, there needs to be a homeownership association formed, there has to be a driveway maintenance agreement written, there has to be approval from the highway supervisor to, that that is being constructed correctly, there needs to be a maintenance endowment fund. The attorney general needs to provide a no action to waive on that item as well. And again, we're back to, you know, how is this going to build out, because once they go beyond nine lots, they're into town road country. And obviously, these lots are designed to add more later. Right? We can see the next five-lot subdivision coming in, and then the next one coming. And at the end of the day, the town doesn't have the cul-de-sac, has the cul-de-sac problem that the town code says needs to be avoided. That large lot has two accesses, one on Buttonwood, one on Ballenbecker, and the subdivision should be put a road in there to make sure that there are no cul-de-sacs, because the town is said does not have any more cul-de-sacs. Very easy for the property owner to do, but it's not part of the plan today. It's pretty easy to picture that they're going to add four, five, or six more lots onto that shared driveway, or that private road, or that town road. And then we have to ask ourselves, what's going to happen with all the mailboxes at the end of the street? What's going to happen with all the garbage containers at the end of the street, all the recycling containers at the end of the street? All the paper boxes at the end of the street, and all the issues that people have when they can't get up their driveway in the winter time? So I'm asking that the planning board insists that that first section at least be a, be a town road with a real town cul-de-sac at the end of it. And that town, and even on a private driveway, that road needs to be a twelve-foot road with two twelve, two, two-foot shoulders, so it needs to be sixteen feet wide, which is going to put them very close to that wetlands that borders the current, current lane arrangement there. Um, now, in a subdivision, the subdivision is supposed to provide ten percent of the value of the land to the, to the town in some form, either through parkland that's open to everybody, or through a donation. Was that proposed in the application? Because I didn't see that anywhere. And if those are just conservation areas that aren't available to me as a town resident, I really didn't gain any value from that. So when they talk about those conservation offerings, we should make sure those conservation offerings are available for town residents to use. Because after all, it's the burden on us current residents who are going to be what we're going to be imposed upon, and we should get some value back out of that. And we, you know, the way, the way that they've currently structured, uh, those conservation areas, the only people that will benefit are the people on the private road, the new, new lot opens. So a lot of things to think about as a planning board, appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I think, I believe, I know the site visit was conducted, I don't think that anyone other than you and you weren't there the whole time.
Yeah, we weren't there very long, it pouring down rain, we ended up not making it to death all the way back, so I wouldn't even call it a site visit.
Uh, we, we certainly will propose scheduling another site visit, I think uh, there's a great deal of information yet to come in, um. Mr. Duncanburg is still working through some things, and I think one of them is the, uh, the just, the differences in the, in the surveys of the, of the driveways, and so I know that he's working on resolving that, so.
Can you tell me that for us?
I.
What is? We're still, we're still waiting on John Decker, oh, I think they've situation with him.
Well, I know that, did we have, we had information in the application that suggested there was a survey that he was submitting, if I recall correctly. And so, I think.
Tom? We'll have to submit a survey.
You'll have to submit a survey, and it will have to, you know, if there are differences between the survey he submits and your survey, they will have to be reconciled in some way. We're going to have to find out which survey is right, so what I'm suggesting is, you know, we have a lot more information that is going to have to come in on this, you know, a lot of questions that need to be answered, um, a lot of which have been raised tonight, some of them raised before, so the only thing I can assure you is we're going to continue, this public hearing is going to stay open, and we'll continue to take public comment, and we'll continue to look for answers to the questions that have been raised. Michael, anything you want to add?
Um, no, I think that we're still waiting for a good deal of information. I, I have walked the property extensively for a couple of different reasons. And, um, basically, most of the area that really is wetland, stream type, headwaters, things like that is to the left of that property. So it's, it's quite a unique property. So I can sort of see why they're trying to do development on the left side of it, but I think we still, as we're going to, we still have a number of questions that need to be addressed.
All right, um, there's nothing more from the, yes? Okay, if that's what we're going to discuss right now, the earliest would be October fourth. Do you, does anyone feel we'll have enough information by October fourth? Well, it, it was, Mr. Duncanburg is not here, and he can't answer that question, I think what I'll propose is that we continue it to October fourth at six forty-five, and should we not have the information we need, we'll continue it at that point another month, and if we continue to not get it, then we'll continue the public hearing to an indefinite period in the future. But for right now, I think we're giving the benefit of the doubt, and go with October fourth at six fifteen, six forty-five. So if everyone is in agreement with that, I would entertain that motion. Uh, so I have a motion to continue the public hearing to October fourth at six forty-five, put it on a second.
Second chance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, new extensions, all right, so we'll see you on Zoom. Uh, next up, the application of Christopher Holmes. Uh, next up, the application of Christopher Hines. Wilder Cliff LLC, five twenty-four mil road. Improvements to existing structure, new driveway, and the renovation of an existing shed. Thank you all for coming in, Tom and Ray.
Uh, good evening, everybody. So at our last meeting, uh, with the planning board, uh, there was, uh, you know, presentations of, uh, new materials relative to the, uh, to the barn, uh, that was discussed. And at that time, uh, we also, uh, requested, scheduled a subsequent meeting with, uh, APAC to meet at the property, uh, to discuss, uh, some of the, um, architecture related to the barn. And then also, at a previous meeting, um, at, at that time, we had not, um, received archaeological report from, uh, Harkins Associates. And between meetings, uh, that material did become available and has been forwarded to this board. And also, um, uh, last Friday, I sent that out to, uh, the chairs for APAC, uh, with the archaeological information. Before I get into, um, look, our, you know, our discussion with APAC at our site meeting, also, uh, this evening, one of the items that I, uh, wanted to discuss was I had, uh, there's been a, another proposed change, uh, for, um, all the property. It's that, uh, one of the, and it's, it's reflective of one of the comments that we've had with our APAC meeting. It's the actual relocation of the playhouse. And I have sent Jim a copy of the site, of the site plan, uh, today. That shows, I don't know if the board members recall that, uh, the playhouse was to be located. The, uh, new tribal that was going to be, uh, considered, that's going to be constructed to Morton Road. Uh, that's since been removed. And, uh, the location of the playhouse is now to be, uh, to the south. Uh, it's true, Jim, as the curse of the, to the, to, yeah, right there, to the south of the, of the pool. And that's, um, uh, that's directly reflective of, uh, part of the meeting that we had with APAC on site.
So, Mark, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll show you.
Yeah, thank you. Clean the mask. From, if that's the new location?
That's the, this is the new location. Here's the existing location now, right? Here's the pool.
Okay.
House, referred to as now.
Okay.
Uh, here, the driveway here goes to, um, Horton Road, and then it was proposed to be here. It's now been relocated, um, you know, um, with more connection, uh, to, you know, to the house and to the pool.
Part of what we heard from APAC, I want, um, was that, you know, as a playhouse, was in sort of within sight of the residence. And so we want, that's announced within sight of the residence opposed to the gatehouse repurposing previously.
And was that new location tested in the, by Harkins?
Usually it's not. I don't know that it would require, but to think about this, whether, you know, for site disturbance. I guess if the foundation goes in, it would have to be, it would have to be tested in that location.
I believe in previous meetings, we did indicate that that would be the case. And, and did they test for it in the location where it was going to be the day house?
Oh, yes. So, so in the, uh, just a summary of the Harkins report, there was, there were no significant findings. It was all disturbed areas that were associated with the site plan, with the proposed site plan, were tested by Harkins. And, uh, in summary, um, they, there were no issues with improvements that are proposed on site relative to our driveway, um, landscaping. This plan doesn't show, if there's also, I won't put it into that, but everybody, uh, the board knows of the landscaping that's being proposed along Mill Road. Same thing with the landscaping that's being proposed, uh, between, uh, this between Wilder Cliff and Wildersley. And I, I will also note that, that at the APAC meeting, that there was, uh, significant discussion, you know, extended discussion about how the landscaping being proposed through here and the, and the view sheds for both neighbors to the east and along the road. And at the, at the meeting, so in attendance to the meeting, so, uh, I was there, Larry Garrick, Chris Hines, and then also Adele Schaefer, uh, the, uh, landscape architect was there. And so the landscaping design that has been done here with a, it's a combination of removal of some trees and also, uh, the, obviously, the addition of some trees. It is respectful of the historic views, uh, from Mill Road and then also with the neighbors. At, at the same time, being able to, once again, the, uh, the goal is to, the goal is, is to provide, also provide the Heintzes with, you know, some privacy, uh, in this, in this section here. And the pool is located right through here and also the house. And, um, uh, and I feel that, uh, that discussion was, uh, um, you know, it was successful in that, um, I, I felt, I, I walk away feeling that the, uh, APAC had, had, had looked at it and they, there were, there were no issues, uh, related to both landscaping, uh, improvement projects. Also, Kathy, were there, if I was speaking correctly with regard to the, okay? And then, um, uh, I guess when it, uh, when it comes down to, let's see, oh, for both person Laura, I was just going to start this with a pop. I want to, if any, have I missed anything from, uh, just my general overview of where we are right now? And then, uh, what the, um, you know, the summary of the distance, you know, a, a part, a portion, you know, a partial summary of the discussion, uh, for, uh, what our, what our meeting with APAC on site. Um, I guess it, you know, it comes down to, um, you know, the improvements that have been, uh, associated with the barn. And so, uh, at this time, the, the improvements are the same as, um, there's, there's been, there's, you know, there was extended discussion with APAC at that meeting. And it's just, you know, reference, the, the reason for that is that, that second meeting with APAC was that rear shed there on the, on the west side of the barn, I believe. And because that was not, uh, part of what was originally presented at the, uh, at our, at our first meeting with APAC on site. And so that's this elevation right here. And, um, so that was the, uh, the reason for us all to be, but it, it, so they, um, you know, the meeting, you know, finished with, uh, the discussion of, uh, and I'll look to both, uh, Chris and Laura and also Larry to, uh, you know, to help me with this discussion with this board to, uh, I guess, uh, not only discuss what, you know, the, um, I guess, looking at both points of view uh, for, uh, for this project and for the, uh, the direction of, of going with, uh, with the barn. And, um, you know, those points of view are, you know, from the, from Chris and Laura's perspective and also, uh, you know, feedback, truthfully feedback that we got from, uh, APAC at that meeting. And also, I think, previous meetings. So maybe at this time, I'll turn it over to this, this Larry, wanted to.
I mean, I, I would just say something brief. I think most of you have stood up on the second floor. And I think the primary idea of having that door on the back is, um, it allows that second floor to be a useful space. It provides light where there is none. It provides potential for egress where there is none. Um, it provides, uh, I guess, potentially ventilation. And, and it makes, and otherwise, it's, there's a large truss, as you may recall, right down the middle room. The roof is slanted. And so the addition of the shed door makes what essentially turns from a large hallway into a useful space. And, um, you know, the authorities have proposed to use the west elevation, uh, already. And this would make the second floor much more useful. And that's really, um, bold in, in adding that. And I think Larry, you had some information to open and share for the benefit.
I just want to say that I don't know why the mask is ruined my theory. But there you have it. Um, well, I wrote a narrative which I sent you, Jim. Did you get that? Did you?
Yeah.
Has it been shared with, with Jim?
Well, I sent it to Jim for you guys, but I'll read it and I'll read it as fast as I can. This project intends to provide adaptive reuse. Tell me when I'm, you know, intends to provide adaptive reuse and code compliance for a six thousand square foot anti-carriage barn with an attached residence on the historic Wilder Cliff property. And the six thousand feet include staff residence. Originally built as a six-floor stable and carriage garage, it featured a two-bedroom apartment and rooftop on the south end. We will, we will remake the six-stall stable as a three-bay garage by adding a five-foot one-story addition on the north side, which will preserve the original dimensions of these rooms. The three new overhead doors will be carriage door style. Details of trim and siding will match the existing. The main room, approximately forty by forty, that was for carriage storage, will become a communal space for residents of this property. This room will have two large glazed openings, twelve by ten, flanking a large fieldstone fireplace. The fireplace will, um, have an interior and exterior firebox. The exterior fireplace will serve a deck fourteen by sixty-two. The fitting, the fittings from a previous deck adjacent to the apartment are there in the ground. Colors for this deck will harmonize with the barn color. This step fit, this deck faces into the woods and is completely behind the barn. A rebuilt stair serving the second floor will comply with the building code. So what's going on up there is there's about a, there's the second floor for the apartment. And then there is the, uh, second floor of the entire rest of the building. And that's what the subject about the shed dormer is, and also the staircase. So here I'm talking about the staircase. A rebuilt stair serving the second floor will comply with the building code. It's thirty inches wide now, and it serves an area over a thousand square feet. So we couldn't even get a, uh, treadmill up that staircase. The second floor will receive a thirty-four foot long shed dormer that, that will allow for a row of windows to the west for light and ventilation. The shed dormer is necessary to create headroom for a recreational area. So Chris mentioned a giant truss, which, Jim, could we have the second floor? Yeah, that's it. So, um, no? This one? Oh, yeah, oh, there it is. On the ceiling. So we've discussed this before. In order for the carriages to operate on the lower floor, on the attic floor, they had put a giant built-up beam of the type that you would see normally for like a small bridge. And when I say for a small bridge, I mean like three feet. So this project changed from our initial presentation to you. And it changed at a meeting when some of you went with us up to the second floor and looked at that room, which is, uh, a narrow room. It's very long. It has the beam down the middle and you can't walk. You can't walk more than about seven or eight feet, which is about a little less than halfway. That's why this is here, um, without bumping your head. So when we were up there together and I thought about it after I left, I said, well, it's, it's ridiculous, this room, because we were all in there like this and there's absolutely no light in there and I have another document to talk about. So this says, the shed dormer is necessary to create headroom for a recreational area. So the Heintzes have three kids, they have a lot of family, and they're intending to put a gym in the second floor. And for instance, a ping pong table here, if the roof stays there, the ping pong table won't fit. There isn't enough room for the runout on each side. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for the shed dormer. Uh, the shed dormer, as well as the five-foot ground level bump out, how about the first fortune? So this area, and this is a very good suggestion from your site visit, they want to put three cars in here. They're not their everyday cars. They're just the cars that they have, like their Jeep and so, recycling, stuff like this. So we were going to move this wall over five feet. And it was suggested that we put the five feet on this side of the building. So this represents that. We would have, uh, two posts that carried the second floor, which runs along there. And then we would have five feet on the, uh, north side, which is from that wall to, I didn't realize it was shaking so much. But now I see a crack, uh, five feet, and that gives us enough room to get in like a regular garage, a twenty-four foot deep garage. The shed dormer, as well as the five-foot ground level bump out at the north end of the garage, can be identified and or removed at a later, later date for historical purpose. The east side of the attic will receive two small gables. Jim, can we go back to the second? So what we're proposing is to have two gables on the front. One's there, they're about five and a half feet wide, and one is over this staircase. The staircase is there now. It's just too narrow to get anything up to that area. So we're keeping the staircase in the same place and we're putting a dormer here to light this stair. And then we're putting a dormer here. I like it because if you had to get out of this area, this would allow you to go out the front of the building. And this is all a roof here. So I like it from a safety point of view. It provides a, uh, second means of egress from this. And also, there is a means of egress that goes through this apartment, but that's not really kosher. Okay, the east side of the attic will receive two small gable dormers, approximately five foot six wide. The northern gable will provide headroom and light for the new code compliance stair. The stair that's there absolutely has the wrong riser, the wrong depth of tread, and it's too narrow. The northern gable will provide headroom and light. The southern gable will provide cross ventilation and light to the gym as well as egress to the roof below in emergency situations. The carriage barn will receive a new heating system as well as air conditioning. The garage at the north end will be fire. The garage at the north end will be fire-rated. So that's a whole problem when you have an expense. The garage has to meet the state code about fire protection. It is the intention of the Heintzes to preserve the barn and turn it into a safe and light-filled structure. It is our conviction that a useful building is more likely to be well-maintained. So we're saying this considerable investment is going to bring new life into the barn. Now, I just got a letter from Jordan. I, he may have just sent it in on your email. But let me just read this and then I will cede the floor. "The New York State Residential Code requires the following percentages of floor areas to be provided by natural light and ventilation. Light 8%, ventilation 4%. This space currently has zero of its own devoted natural light and ventilation." And I take it you all remember that. And I think we even have some fine photos of that cave that's at the top of those stairs. "By adding the front gable dormers and rear dormers, we will make this space code-compliant, beautiful and light-filled while improving the dimensions of what is otherwise the long awkward shape for any normal use." "With the dormers achieved, we go 11, we go light at 13% and ventilation at 6.6. The clarity the code presents us with bare minimums. In other words, if you build any less than the code requires, you'd be breaking the laws. It would be a new building, not a room. It's not breaking the laws that it's right now because it's not a habitable space. It's an attic. So we'd like to make it a habitable space." "And that is our intent, to make the building vital and to get the light." Any other? Yeah, we're trying to get there. That's right. Okay, questions?
No.
Can you send those to the documents to Gretchen? I don't know if she was able to send them. Do you just need those to?
Sure. I just, in general, comment on, or the problem we've been experiencing is not getting materials far enough in advance for the entire planning board to receive them and be able to review them. Such is the case with the archaeology report.
Cars?
The archaeology report was received on Friday. Normally, new materials should be before us. We ask for them two weeks in advance, so the planning board has adequate opportunity to review them. I understand there was also additional information asked for in the fields by HAPAC, which hasn't been received. So, you know, this slows the process down. And I understand there was a holiday in there and I get it. But this kind of thing is not helpful to just, we didn't receive it, nobody's seen it, nobody's had a chance to digest it or review it.
You're talking about Jordan's letter?
Yeah, that's one, yeah.
The narrative, I think we gave.
I don't have a copy of the narrative. I just today received the hard copy of the Hartman report. Which, and I understand that Mark has been working hard to try and get a release from them, from the fact that it says draft, but it still says draft. And we also know that now a new area has to be investigated as well. So I will defer to Kathy at some point, but from what you presented, Larry, it sounds as if this is the application that we saw before.
That's correct. So I think this is the same that was presented at the October, excuse me, August 17th with board.
And the, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding that HAPAC was waiting for a confirmation as to what was the final, final submittal. And having not received one word, a word one way or the other, that it was or wasn't, HAPAC has not completed their review and has not completed their written recommendations. Nor has Ann, Dr. Wentworth, completed her review of archaeology.
Understood.
So that's.
So, whoever wishes to answer, do we have a full and complete digital copy of the application that you wish would be considered your final presentation?
You will, and so it's been in pieces. So I will, I more than, I think, anyone, since I've spent so much time with this board, I try to respect the process
Thank you.
with this board. And so I will combine that information into a single submission, digital and hard copy. But also to just.
Excuse me, just before you and thank you to that, may we also consider the archaeology report?
Well.
Even though it has draft on it and even though it needs some updating. What I'm trying to do, Mark, for Chris and Laura and all of you is to get the committee's report done, presented to the planning board, and should you wish to read it to you as well. And we have been waiting for this. If you get it to us, let's do so. You get it to us by tomorrow. We'll see if we can get the report done, finished off, either by Friday or Monday.
So if I could just, so when I did email the, I'll start with the Hartman report. I think you do. So I emailed it at 8:30 Friday morning because I was unable to get Hartman to, you know, take draft off and.
Is there a reason for that, Mark?
So while we were on a pre-application today, Hartman reached out to me and I said, please, I need to talk to you, but I'm on a Zoom meeting. So it'll be tomorrow. I mean, I reached out to the archaeologist several times and she just didn't return my call, assuming, or emails, assuming they're busy. There's no, no issue with the report. I just couldn't get them to finalize it.
Yeah, well, and the only comment I would make is that what we will get, what I would presume we would get back from an archaeologist would be findings pending its acceptance as a final report, not a draft. She's, she's not gonna, she's not gonna sign off until she knows that's the final report. Or at least, I wouldn't if I were her.
Well, I just told her. I said that we were satisfied with the information that we could make it a final report.
Okay, so maybe tomorrow you'll know.
Maybe.
Okay.
So, but back to, you know, my understanding of the process with this board. This board has always been truly neat, very fairly. And I try to do the same with this board in respect of submission materials. And so that will occur, a complete submission to this board digitally. And if hard copies are necessary, I'll also do that. But in the email, I would finish this. In the email on Friday, I did outline that I did try to reach Hartman and unable to do that. And that, please consider this as a, as, you know, as a document. Because I didn't anticipate any changes. So that was Friday morning at 8:30. And not to get into a back and forth, Kathy, but I thought that there was some understanding with the, at the HAPAC meeting to, you know, if I had, I sit in there, look, I was trying to do it right away. I said, Friday at the latest. And, and I thought there was, you know, a nod from Warren. That was okay. And granted, it was only one item. It was only, it was only the Hartman report because there was still some, you know, discussion about what to do with the architecture for the barn. And I guess I also want to be able to understand the process, you know, you know, especially, you know, on behalf of the Heintzes through theirs. So it's a, you know, obviously, there's been, we've had lengthy discussion about the barn and the, you know, the history and the, and, you know, the, you know, certainly the, we've met and listened to HAPAC twice now and have a, I guess I can only speak for myself, but Chris and Laura can know this from up there and discuss this. But it's, you know, certain you know, views and opinions from HAPAC have been very obvious, you know, as to, you know, the importance of the history of the barn and, and trying to keep it, you know, it's keep it intact as much as possible. And obviously, here, we're trying to find some type of common use between maintaining the history of this important structure in the town of Rhinebeck and at the same time providing some type of useful, you know, structure that, you know, Chris and Laura and their family can enjoy. And what I'm hopeful of is to be able to, you know, put a complete submission together that HAPAC is able to review and provide comments to this board. And then we come back and have a discussion about that with the planning board. And, and, you know, obviously, the goal is to come to a resolution so that we can, you know, the Heintzes and the planning board can move on from the subject. I'm not in any way, you know, diminishing the importance of it. I'm just, I guess, just trying to, what I see is the process. And so, so I would look to make that submission look for, you know, on behalf of Chris and Laura and get information, you know, comments back and hate that. And then I'm assuming we will, this public hearing would continue to the first meeting in October. And then we would have the opportunity to, you know, discuss those comments and discuss. And I'm assuming, I think, when we met, there would be an actual, would there be a formal reading from HAPAC to the board at that meeting?
No, we have done that in the past and we can, or we can simply make it available to you, to Chris and Laura and Larry. And Warren read, has read them in the past. But, you know, I think just to be clear with you guys, we all want to see this move along. We do. And anything that committee can do with regard to the planning board be helpful or to the client and applicants, we all want to see it move along. And so if you can just get us that body of information, we'll move on.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in and make a suggestion and I'll defer to Jim and others to stop me, if I, if I need to be stopped. But on occasion, not you, on occasion in the past, when we run into situations such as this, and I hear you, Mark, expressing an interest in having a dialogue. Well, you know, it's not always easy to have a dialogue at a public hearing because, you know, it's not, it's not the place where it's best conducted. And so when we run into those situations with engineering, we often in the past have asked for a workshop meeting where the details of the engineering situation can be discussed. I am wondering if we are at the point where we should be scheduling a workshop between the planning board and HAPAC and the applicants to discuss? Because you're using the word discuss and, you know, your application comes in and other than HAPAC rebutting it, I'm trying to figure out how we advance discussion and dialogue versus just this back and forth. And I have not ever done it. And I don't know that it's the right solution, but I put it out there for a response.
You know, Melody, I think they're sick of listening to HAPAC. Let me finish, let me finish that. I can hardly blame them because there are, you know, a lot of different opinions on both sides of the equation. I do think they hope that a discussion with the planning board, which they have not had in full, will give them a sort of broader understanding than, you know, including HAPAC in it. I think that, is there anything that you don't think you know that HAPAC dealt with at the project? No, you heard it all, quite. So I'm inclined to think that what they really want or what he's really looking for is the input from you guys that they haven't had as much. Well, and I'm gonna include me again too, sorry. But do you understand what I'm saying? I think they really want to have dialogue.
I, I understand. I just am not envisioning how that takes place. But that's my own, that's my own opinion.
Can't we just give them your feedback now?
Well, no, because we don't have our recommendations from HAPAC.
Okay.
And I would not personally want to be expressing. So I've heard from them. And the one thing I would say, and I appreciate everything you said, Larry, and I appreciate what Jordan said, although I haven't read it. I appreciate that he's looking at it. But I just want to point out that, you know, we're not here to really, I mean, the point of HAPAC right now is to look at the, the impact on the exterior of the building. So talking about the interior and talking about light and space and all that is important. I get it. But I would also say some of those things would not be coming into play were you not proposing dramatic changes. So, you know, let's not conflate them here. You're right. The proposals that Jordan's talking about are coming about because of the change of use on the inside. But it's also impacting those exterior elevations and that is where HAPAC is coming from. So what you discussed tonight doesn't really address the concerns that were raised by HAPAC in terms of what they consider to be significant changes. So I guess we'll we'll move on and you will get the information to HAPAC. They will review it. We will review it as a planning board and be prepared to discuss it at the next public hearing.
If that's what this board's, I was just trying to move the process. That's, and being respectful to both parties.
Yeah, I mean, Kathy used it, they could turn around the report pretty quick, right? We'll get next meeting, right?
So.
Marty already did a draft, I know that comes as a shock, but he did.
So I, I won't guarantee it tomorrow because I'd like to.
We want to discuss it for a month, so.
Yeah, but I understand that. But I'd like to be able to first get to Hartman about that other location and then have them finalize it. But I don't anticipate any changes. You know, and I guess, just in order to try to move it along, I would like, even if I doubt I can get Hartman out there in the next couple of days, I would like to package up materials regarding the site plan, plans that Barry has prepared. And I have, I brought in more multiple copies, hard copies. Everyone should have a digital now of Hartman's report. I brought some additional hard copies too. But I'll do it as one package and I'll have it into Gresham Dr. St.
Who wants a hard copy? Before we go there, who wants a hard copy? I don't want to, now we have a storeroom, I already, but.
There's a hard copy for Ann.
We need one for the club, sure, but who wants an actual hard copy? That way, Mark will have a number to make instead of making a 10.
I don't want.
I don't think Joe will.
So.
No, I'll agree.
And not to keep everyone here, Chris and Laura, these others.
No, I just, I appreciate it. Like, it's very, it's a very complicated process, obviously. So we really appreciate just knowing what we need to do and not going like, okay, well, we don't have any of that. Here we come back and. We just need to know what we need going forward. But we appreciate all the time and energy that has been taken.
We'll keep it in more of your time. Anything else?
I would just entertain the motion to continue the public hearing until October 4th at 6:45.
So move.
Second?
Second, Sean. Thursday, I already put it out. It's on the block.
Elbows in favor?
I.
Pose. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, I'd like to move to the last public hearing, Justin McCloud, Five Thirty One Old Work for Road Renovations. We are meeting renovating small buildings solar array installation. Darren?
Yes.
You're here to give us an overview of what's happening and some changes and.
I'll be above.
I'll be above.
And my apologies, we addressed our cover letter to Michael, not realizing. Chair, next time we'll just.
Well, you could change it then, you know.
Um, so Jim, do you have the presentation I sent you this afternoon? It's just way fewer slides and a big presentation that we sent you.
I do.
So, um, Darren Davidovich with the Art of Building, Representative Justin McCloud, and also here tonight is Lauren Pauls, who's an architect and project manager. In our office and, and Lauren is really the mastermind, the person that pulled this. Pretty extensive presentation together on our end, so she really deserves all the credit for what we're gonna show tonight. Um, but for the most part, I'll take you through where things are, what has changed, and then, um, Lauren can fill in some of the details. That are beyond my pay grade when we get to that point. Um, so for starters, what we submitted, um, was a pretty extensive presentation, uh, the second fairly extensive presentation that we've submitted to date. Um, changed in many ways, all of them, um, in the lesser, a lot less impact on the site, a lot less changes, a lot less square footage. A lot less things going on on the site. And, um, that lesser came about as a result of a lot of feedback that we received from the historic committee. Uh, the planning board at various, the application and prior meetings. And, um, you know, we're pretty proud of it at this point. We think it's, um, a much more sensitive proposal. Um, part of our clients for being open minded and considering quite a few very substantial changes to what their original vision for the site was. Um, and I'll do my best to take you through it quickly. It's a, it's a good amount of information. And what this presentation is that I sent today is just fewer slides, so I just eliminated a lot of the. The slides that go really, really deep into some of the history, but we can certainly go there if anyone on the board or.
Let me just say, we will be scheduling another site visit, so there will be a whole opportunity. And I would say we would open it up to any members of the planning board again. Um, so there will be plenty of field opportunities. In depth, so please don't feel you have to share everything tonight.
So I'll go through some of the highlights then of what have changed.
That'd be great.
So Jim, if we just look to the first slide there. Site background, um, site is stayed in the same place. It's still eleven acres. It's still in the RC five zone. Looking through to the next, uh, slide. So the biggest takeaway is that we have a much lighter touch this time around. Um, all historic structures are proposed to remain exactly where they are today. Um, and it's significant to note that in the nineteen eighty six nomination for the National Register, there were nine features. Um, that were discussed that constituted, uh, contributed to the significance of the site. And just quickly, they were the farmhouse, which is the main house, and it is staying intact where it is. And we're proposing a very, very small sunroom addition to it, not the large addition that we originally proposed. There's a Dutch barn, a large Dutch barn that was located across the street. That barn is no longer there, so one of the nine is gone. But it is not one of the structures on this property. Along with the Dutch barn, there were two adjacent smaller barns, both no longer there. Neither of them on this property that we're talking about tonight. So there's three of the nine gone. The remainder, remainder of the nine are the summer kitchen, which is proposed to stay exactly where it is. The carriage barn, stay where it is. The wagon shed, the wellhouse. All staying where they are. And then the stone walls were referenced as a significant contributing factor. And if anything, we're enhancing the amount of stone walls on the property, not taking any away. So, um, that's a big highlight, a big change from our prior presentation. Also, we've eliminated the solar array from the thinking here. Uh, it seemed to be the biggest point of contention with the neighbors. Clients were okay with the idea of removing it from the plan. And that leaves a very, very large open portion of the site, open and untouched the way it has been for a very, very long period of time. I guess, Jim, we can just kind of fly through to maybe the site plan. I think everyone's familiar with the different structures, but I'll take you through. Our presentation has everything numbered the same way. So you see number one, it's the main house. Um, later on in the presentation, give you some of the other names these buildings were referred to by. So we'll use our terminology. But if you want to reference back, and I thought it was called the summer kitchen or something, it's, it's later in the presentation where you can find the, uh. Other names that these structures are known by. But number one, the main house, as I said, um, the only changes we're proposing. Are the additions of windows and a sun porch to the main house, no longer a very large addition. Uh, building number two is the little house or what's known as the summer kitchen. Uh, that's proposed to remain where it is. Uh, the intended use of that is a playhouse of the home office, um, you know. A place to escape from the kids or a place for the kids to escape from the adults essentially. Main barn number three, that is proposed as a detached accessory dwelling. And we realized that building is larger than the code allowed nine hundred square feet. And we realize that is variance territory certainly, but the board's recommendation. It's, you know, it walked like a duck, let's call it a duck, it's a detached accessory dwelling. So we intend to pursue a variance, hopefully to get the square footage limitation lifted, so we can keep that structure. Um, with the same floor plates it has today. Uh, there's a running shed number four, which is not a historic structure. Um, a bit of a change in thinking there. We were originally proposing to renovate that building. We're now just proposing to remove that building and recreate something with the same massing. Um, it, it, it's what you expect a running shed built in two thousands to be, it's. Two by fours and texture one eleven plywood on the exterior, um, and certainly not anything that was ever listed as historic on the property. But we will be putting the building back in that same location that it occupies today. Then, uh, pool house, which is, uh, was a former chicken coop or poultry shed. Uh, just proposed to be converted to a space to use, um, swimming pool. And then there's a small wellhouse on the site, which will stay where it is, um, adjacent to the little house and the main house. Very close in that cluster in the buildings. Proposed site plan, um, what's just significant about this slide is that, um, in this area are the new additions to the property. Those new additions are a swimming pool and some associated structures, um, some pergola structures. And a small, um, little shed that would be used to store removals and other things like that. Um, and what I wanted to point out on this slide is that we've intentionally just separated those elements. Just a bit from the historic clustering of buildings that exist on the site or has existed on the site for a very long period of time. So that they're close enough so that they're within what's called the development zone or what we've learned to be the developed portion of the site. They don't infringe on the great expanse of open space. But they're far enough away from the clustering of buildings that there's something new. I mean, they're, they're not something that's part of the history of the site. So without violating. The open space area, we just put a little bit of a gap in there to suggest this is something, this is something different. This is not part of the historic site. There's a couple of proposed removals. Uh, this came up on our site visit. Uh, there was quite a bit of question and concern about some of the things we may be. Taking away, um, most importantly, um, there was an above ground pool in that location. There was some question on the site visit as to what that was. So we're gonna repurpose the, the. Stones that were used to access the pool, basically a ladder, and we'll make them a nice rock garden. So a proposed removal is some of, are some of the stones in that area, which are certainly not part of the historic site. Um, and then we talked about a couple of other things in terms of removing a good amount of an academy in this area. Um, essentially it's a big courtyard in the middle of the farms that were proposed to remove and pull the parking away from the buildings a bit. Um, brick walkway, um, that will get removed. Um, as I mentioned, the running shed will get removed and then replaced with essentially the same building, just something a lot more suited to. Minor control. Protected from the elements. Going through, um, um, just one slide back, um, so this was a very important thing we learned, um. Through the interactions with the historic committee, and that is, we were asked to basically. Put everything in the context of the historic period of significance. And this timeline and a lot of supporting information in the, the written presentation. Is the methodology that we use to get a period of significance. And that period of significance for this property is eighteen hundred to nineteen hundred. So anything that existed after that period is deemed not part of the history of the site, things like the running shed and the brick walkway and the ground pool. And it also gives us some design principles to use when we put forth, and, excuse me, improvements in these different buildings and to the site as a whole. My best to go through, um, this is a little bit of a chronology. It's, it's interesting in that it takes us through several. Different years, several different time periods, and you can see the addition of buildings over time. In seventeen ninety, the Dutch barn across the street, just no longer there. In eighteen ten, we had the farmhouse and the well building. And then in eighteen fifty, we added a few more structures. We added the summer kitchen, the main barn. We had the wellhouse and then also the wagon shed was added in fifteen or before eighteen fifty. And then, as we get to nineteen hundred, um, this is probably the most relevant. Um, framework for everything we're proposing. All of those same buildings are there, Dutch barns still across the street. But there's a, a large orchard, uh, on the site. And you can also see very distinctly some of the landscape elements. And what we're proposing if we look to twenty twenty one is to restore that orchard, um, one of the things. You know, one of the landscape improvements for the back more of the period significance that are proposed. And another element is that there is this, um, this connector road here, this small road. That has existed for a very long period of time. It's actually, um, it shows up much earlier, much earlier areas than nineteen fifty five. Sorry, click with the screen. Um, but this, this road along the rear is a farm that's been there for a long period of time. Basically makes sense when you think about the Dutch barn originally being located here. This is the, the way that we would have crossed the road. And accessed the back fields and gone back and forth between the Dutch barn. So we've taken views from those old areas and we're proposing just to. Define that road a little bit better than it is today. It's just more of a thorough to do a little bit of gravel. Quicker now, Jim, I'm sure, um. Just important to know, at one point, this is an agricultural census. Um, there were seventy five apple trees on the property. Um, in addition to lots of other crops that were grown, livestock and dairy. Um, but as we talk about restoring the orchard, we're really looking at that number saying that we're not gonna put seventy five apple trees back. But we're certainly gonna incorporate a number of them to create a good amount of privacy from the road and go back to that period of significance. We've done archaeology. Uh, in fact, we studied a larger area than our development contemplated, current plan contemplated. Because it was originally a bigger footprint of development, so the archaeology report is very much relevant. And in fact, probably further reaching and might be required as we promote this plan from the get-go. Some views, everyone's very familiar, but a view straight in from Old Workburg Road. Just quickly through those, weren't on the site visit, main house, um, little barn, um, main barn. And this is the former chicken coop, proposed pool house, and right here's the small well shed. Next slide is a view from the exact opposite side. So this would be looking at the back of those same buildings. Um, main house, little barn, wellhouse, main barn. Proposed pool house slash current chicken coop. And then this is the running shed that's proposed for recreation. Landscape plan, um, this does quite a bit to give all the details, all the rollups and crannies. It's also matching the site plan that was submitted, the engineered site plan. It's just a little bit easier to follow. Um, but you can see the addition of the pool and, um, an outdoor hot tub. And this is the replaced running shed. Proposal, that's a pool house. Um, vegetable garden here at the road. Some of the shade structures that I mentioned being associated with the pool. And you get, the idea here is that this area, this reestablished orchard. And these plantings, this hedge along the pool fence and this garden, and then real enhancement of landscaping along the rock wall and the road. Are all designed to provide some layers of buffer, if you will, from the road so that you don't see that pool. And obviously if you're in the pool, you don't feel like you're sitting right on the road. Another really important thing to note is that this yellow color is basically just giant open space. It always has been according to period of significance, the old areas. The development was all really bound by this row of trees. So all the development existed in this area and the agriculture, you know, the orchard was here. So what we've done is, although we've separated the pool a little bit from the structures, we've honored this line. And we've kept all of our development, uh, to the west of that line. And we've done our best to use things that were originally there to buffer that development from the road. And another significant point about why the pool is here is that this is where you get the real long view, right? Get this beautiful view out into the field. Um, while we're on this slide, I'll just mention that the entire area that we're talking about, even though we're talking about existing buildings. Is under five percent slope. That came up previously and it's a question about topography. Anything we're talking about developing in is under five percent slope. Um, there is a very gradual falloff here, and that is why we chose to locate the pool fence out a little further from the pool. The idea being that you can, you can see right over that fence and still get that long view, but remain New York State code compliant for pools. Or when there's that, this is where the pool would be proposed. And then this is that long view that would get just sitting in the pool, looking out at that field. The road that will enhance that from people through the back of the property. This is the current gate that sits on Old Workburg Road. And I, I will be at the Dutch barn right now, we'll connect that gate, so we're proposing to keep that road. Unless more would like me to, I don't necessarily need to go through all the details about each structure. But what we've submitted, um, are fact sheets, um, multiple pages long on each of the properties. Including some interior and exterior photos of the different structures. Um, the age of the structures, the aliases that they have, and then we go on and talk about the development plan. Um, I think if you can flip to this one, it's very similar, one back one, sorry, um, back one. Uh, a forward one, sorry. Forward, forward. So what this does is show a proposed elevation, shows the existing, an existing photograph. And then it highlights anything that's new, anything we're proposing to change. So you can see each of these different elevations, just pure, and you can see, okay, there's a change that proposed at the front door. This elevation, lovely, um, nineteen ninety edition here, the old house, nineteen edition. Um, proposed addition of a sun porch. Elevation, that sun porch continues. With elevation, see more of them to that sun porch, and the addition of some, some windows, um, that the current. Blacks, that nineteen ninety's addition on the back of the farmhouse. And we've done this for each building. Um, I think, Jim, maybe if we find this slide for each one, we'll just kind of go very quickly through. Floor plans submitted, proposed, um, floor plans. Um, important to note that the house is drawn as a three bedroom, but we are seeking septic approval to make it a four bedroom. The thought is that their current configuration is for three bedrooms, but for resale reasons or something down the road. If you could argue that one of these rooms could be converted to a bedroom, so if there's more septic capacity was ideal. Um, which are purging against the creation of a three bedroom house of this size, which seems like a bit of a strange anomaly. Sure, purging against the creation of a three bedroom house of this size, which seems like a bit of a strange anomaly. Those floor plans, um, the little house also known as the summer kitchen, there was some debate about whether or not it was in fact a summer kitchen. But thanks to help from Nancy Kelly, we have found ghosting of a chimney in the roof, so we do believe there's cooking that happened there. And we know there was a woodshed in the back of the building at one point, which is no longer there today. So surely looks like a summer kitchen. This is proposed as a playhouse, we're going to some good detail about like the extent of new materials on the exterior of these buildings. Um, we're talking about percentage of, of old siding that still exists. And, um, particularly an interesting slide, you can see this building just in a four foot span, it's about five inches, um, out of plumb. Um, thanks to, you know, good siding, sitting more down directly on rock. Rock, it's the damage that comes with that and just fine. Snow loads, the loads, that kind of thing. So of the justification in our minds, at least, um, what we feel. Important to bring up is that these buildings aren't in terrific shape and without some intervention, without a viable use for today. There's not a lot of incentive to invest in them, so part of this plan involves a complete restoration of these buildings. And putting them on real footings and, and doing everything we can to make them code compliant for today. And so that will be around a very long time, including the addition of some historically appropriate materials of much higher quality that were put on. Thank you, some two thousands. Some existing conditions, um, look through fairly quickly. This just talks about the programming, I think if we get to the photo, the slide with some photos and colors, might be one more, there we go. Same, same progression, existing photograph, proposed elevation, any changes proposed in blue. Also important to note, um, this would have been the facade that the woodshed was crafted onto and from the fire slide. We know that that's a hundred percent new side of that applied ways today. So the addition of windows in that back facade, which originally had a bin of building on the back of it. Did not seem to be a big impact. And I'd also point out that the addition of windows to all these buildings is being dug in a way that respects timber frames. And that they could be removed at a later date, so it'll be evident that they were added. And then it would be a very easy thing to do, to remove the windows, to return any of these buildings back to a more fair. Which they would happen in agricultural use. Floor plan, pretty crazy. Um, main barns, this is our proposed detached accessory dwelling. We've had some conversation back and forth, uh, this, I had originally thought this was a one bedroom, but they did want to put a room in for children. So we would be calling this a two bedroom, and we are seeking a septic approval that would allow for that to happen, so we'll make that change. Before the next meeting. But just to be a hundred percent transparent, um, this would be our proposed detached accessory dwellings, two bedrooms, kitchen and bathroom. Um, this building is in extreme need of some intervention, um, as we saw on the site was a tremendous sway in the roof. And it's evident as you look outside, as you see this wall's bulged about five inches. So what's happening is snow load is thrusting down, pushing the walls out, they're bulging. It may not be this winter, but there's not a lot of winters left to go for this building without some intervention. Plus, proposals to convert it and put it into productive use. Um, also worth noting, the plan here is to disassemble, cataloguing, disassemble the timber frame and then put it back together. Something we just recently did in Plating Corners and it worked very, very well. Interior photos, uh, you can see the amount of new material in there, cinder blocks, different things used to support the building. See, that's a level line, what's going on in the dark. Putting some beams there. Yeah, just. Everyone has this in the presentation, but quite a bit of evidence that, you know, interventions have happened, but they haven't been all that peaceful. So we would be looking to replace extra treated lumber and things like that with actual timbers that would have been upgraded this timber frame. All through to the pictures and elevations together, a couple more slides, there we go. So proposed elevations, um, front elevation, facing the road. The changes, uh, the addition of some windows, south elevation. Floor plans. This is the running shed that we talked about replacing. Look through quickly. Sense of when it was built. Of which it was built. And that's proposed to be replaced by a building that looks very similar, similar massing, similar to the flying. And this would be a lot of glass and recreation barn, part of, you know, the amenity. In a way unfair comparison because the building would be gone, but from the same. Floor plans. And then the proposed pool house, which is, uh, today a coop, a chicken coop, that'll use for chickens today. And lots of signs of lumber, dimensional lumber purchased at a store. Siding, a hundred percent of the siding that's going is something I could go purchase every once in a while. But. Salvaging every bit of this that is worth salvaging, straighten it out, bring it out of the way. Stand for a lot longer. We took through maybe one more slide, that's the same analysis, different elevations that was proposed. And we need to a window on the side. Or fence that were great for chickens, but not all that well for pool houses, would be to place five windows on the side. Just for some submit symmetry, adding a second window here to next to it there. Floor plan, not much of a floor plan, just a big open room. Little sink in there. And by the way, the sink in there is also factored into our septic approval, Duchess County still does that. Um, any water would count as one bedroom, if there's no soup in it there. So we factored that into our septic proposal as well. Um, and then the additional structures, um, pool, spa, the actual hot tub. Very simple pergola. Divine arbor, just sort of paralleling the pool here, a pitching garden, a small tool shed. Sort of new that we'll check some of it inside of it. That's supposed to be neat. Well, twice and skimmers and Florida and things like that. There's the pump. It's a crime access, yeah. We basically put a little, you know, enclosure, a little form curvy, like they're around there or something, and then planted for the zone. But they want to be within forty feet of the pool. Who would be gunning, eighteen by forty, dark interior, stone coping. The difference between this photo and the proposed pool is that there'd be a stone pool deck. Pretty typical fence that we've used a number of times in other projects, it works very well. Chunky bed cedar, so chunky bed cedar with mesh on it, so that you have a code compliant barrier. The gates, of course, get metal latches and things like that, and it would maybe not be an auto cover as well. Tool shed, just very simple, eight by ten. This was raised previously and we did eliminate, um, one of the curb cuts that we originally proposed in. There was a talk about bringing a curb cut out on to Schultz Road, we're no longer proposing that. At the strong urging of the town highway department, um, due to site distances. But we are still proposing one more curb cut than existed at, existing there are three connections to the door and bird road, which is a private road by the way. And we're proposing one more. And then one of the neighbors had asked a question about what the septic system was, so we submitted some details. Um, we can submit the full septic plan to the extent of order anybody wants to see it, but, um. It's a conventional septic system, it's an in-ground septic system, there's six forty eight infiltrators proposed. And then there's the required one hundred percent replacement area here. Um, the difference here is that instead of a five bedroom house, it could be a four bedroom house and a two bedroom desk niche. But we are proposing a eight bedroom septic, which can serve the two residences and then the water, that would exist in other buildings. They may only develop three bedrooms in the house. As soon as you check the septic location, where the walls are. This update is, um, pretty close to being approved, actually it's been Duchess County Movers Draft. It meets everything with respect to the water well that's on the site here, um, just the best water well in all of our end back. And then the neighbors' wells and septics and everything is a hundred percent compliance. So it was. Um, summary, I won't read all the items, I just wanted to see if there was another. I wanted to make sure this board's new or had changed. Maybe just more some questions that I had. Just to clarify what we might need to talk to the Z B A about, um. And I'll mention a couple of little numbers and statistics, so I guess, um. The first question we had was the house itself, we meet all of the bulk requirements, everything that's proposed is very informing of the bulk requirements by a good margin. But I did know that the front yard setback currently to the main house is forty four point nine feet. So we don't need that required one hundred foot setback. So I didn't know if that's something we'd be expected to clean up as part of our visit to the Z B A or because it's where it is, we don't have to worry about that. Or grandfather of that, okay, even though we're proposing a little sunroom addition or something.
Well, actually, it's grandfather, it's under your house is here, and the sun is coming off the back, correct?
Yes, so off the ninety's edition.
If you're coming off the front, then yes, you can get there.
That's it, just by touching that building doesn't necessarily kick in. Moving it closer to.
As long as it's within the footprint or the lines of the building. Wherever it might not meet a setback, obviously the rear wood, so yeah, and all those other precise.
And then another question comes about, um, that we are proposing parking right on the road there, but very close to the road rather than. Putting that seat in the pattern back in by the cluster barns was proposing to eliminate the driveway, keep the cars right at the road. Um, which would not comply with the twenty five foot setback for parking.
So the town highway department probably had issues with following now.
Okay, okay, so that was one thing that we just wanted to be sure that we don't miss the opportunity to talk to somebody about. And then, um, we originally were talking about, um, well, we certainly know we need a variance on the detached accessory dwelling. Being larger than nine hundred square feet. Um, but there's also one other question and that relates to, um. Well, I guess the reason originally we were talking about a second variance and that was for the number of accessory structures, which now we understand is part of the special permit. Uh, process, not a Z B A process, we've stopped talking about that. And then we did note in the code that it allows, um, in, if you have more than ten acre, I'm sorry. You're allowed fifteen hundred square foot of accessory structure or three hundred square feet per acre, whichever is more forgiven. So in our case, our calculations show that we're below, um, the thirty three hundred square feet of accessory structure. That eleven acres could allow us to have, so by our math, it didn't look like we need that variance on the. Square footage of accessory structure, because we have eleven acres times three hundred square feet of accessory per acre. Thirty three hundred square feet and, um, we're proposing. Live with a square footage or gross square footage, just that. So I just wanted to be clear as to why we weren't going to pursue that unless there was a reason. So appears, based on what I just heard, that's just one variance that we'd be looking for. During the R C five.
I don't think the three hundred per acre, it only applies to twenty yards.
Also, I need to just accept H P twenty and R A ten. Right, except.
Yeah, that's, that's for.
Oh, I see, and then it goes on to within the H P twenty and R A ten, the aggregate shall not exceed.
Kind of three hundred per acre and part thereof, but it's only an eight point yard.
Okay, so that does seem to remember would be that, the additional variance for another fourteen hundred and twelve square feet of accessory structure.
And, and I, and I think because you're actually taking down the running, the running shed and replacing it. Such as putting up a new structure, even though it's on the same footprint, I think that actually then takes you over the maximum total square footage. Higher reports of your structures, not just the residential, so you've got. Yeah, actually, it's the same, so you're fine, but you need to have that variance.
So two variances, size of accessory dwelling.
Just looking at the existing structures that are already there, it's, it's one thing, but if we go to one, we're not enough supply, so. You'll need that and then the S U P for one and three.
Okay, so I'm. And then just housekeeping items, we get submit, um, a tree survey. Um, the height to take away is that there are absolutely no trees larger than six inches, going to be. By our proposal, um, must have dead or dying, but doesn't really be a tammer. We submitted a disturbance table, four tenths of an acre of disturbance, um, less if you pick during some phasing. Mentioned tree survey, we've given you full reports on all of the archaeology and everything else that was requested. Um, and then just, you know, noting this max lock coverage, you know, allowed twenty five percent of zones. We're still at two point six six percent, even with the factor and pool deck and structures and all the other things on that plan, so. That's the ten percent of the law of the law of the chair. And I mentioned that all the developments in it, uh, slow burnages, under five percent.
Any questions?
Can I just say, um, particularly in light of what you heard about previous weekend. Interventions that we are, um, nobody's perfect, but, um. I for one recognize the effort, the energy, the study that you guys put into this project. And, um, I'm very impressed and I thank you for coming around to respecting what is a. Really, really important property and we on the committee are.
It's also a really beautiful presentation, it's like such a story to watch out.
It was, it was fun, like I said. Photographing the graves of the Marquette family might have been a little over the top, but.
Well, I think, um. It was just pointless, well taken, and it serves going forward as a model for how one should approach a historic property. And, um, and the care and respect that has gone into it, so, you know, bravo to the entire team for. Uh, listening, not just listening, but hearing and understanding the comments that were being made. So that being said, I think, um, you have some work to do into variances and other things.
Yeah, you know, we, do we need a referral to the Z B A or we can just, we just missed the submission deadline on it, it's my fault.
No, you, no, right?
Can this be taken as, this is your official application?
This is it.
I'll write something up.
Yeah, because I think there was an issue with the expiration of the determination.
So you, you two can work together on that. Um, we should work to schedule a follow-up site visit. And is it your intention or have you already submitted this directly to Charles Burnbaum? Or how, how do you intend to work with that for?
Um, you know, we had a conference call with him, so it's possible.
Well, I just wanted to confirm.
We, we haven't sent it directly to him, um, you know, at this point, you know, we're very good, all of them, they gave a lot of insight. This sort of how we would approach the site, I think this achieves most if not all of that. Um, you know, at this point, I don't know if he. You know, at this point, I don't know if he, he would be someone who would be sort of using as a teammate as much as now he goes back to his review.
Yeah, well, I let's set the point. We'll, we'll forward it to him for review if you feel it is at the point that you want him to review it officially.
Yeah, absolutely, please.
Okay. Anything else?
One thing that I will clarify a little bit more, maybe just in a cover letter is just, I want to just articulate the square footages. Um, in a table for you all too, because I, you know, a lot of numbers appear like from parcel access and then we reference footprints and. So, you know, I can give you just two different ways, the footprint of the building and the, the gross floor area seems to be what the building likes. Just, just so that like if there's ever a doubt, we can refer back to that. Cause I know parcel access can be sometimes an error. Um, so just in case there's like a, you know, two different square footage numbers, it might just be a footprint versus the actual floor area.
Yeah, and that's probably the difference.
It seems like that would be helpful, I know.
It's the information that I need to send, the determination to be extended to Z B A, is that in what we have now that the documentation comes with it? We have to go beyond, you know, what's the square feet.
I, I can send you, um, just an email summarizing. It's all in there so that you don't have to hunt that for it, but I can just send you, yeah.
You can send me that, right?
Happy to do that, yeah.
And are you comfortable turning back on October fourth or do you need? Okay, then if someone's lacking at the motion to continue the public hearing until October fourth. Someone, Michael, second, second, please, all those in favor? Hi, those extensions are considering yourself scheduled for six forty five along with everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. There are no zoning referrals, there's no other business, so I would entertain a motion to, um. Remove by Kathy. All those in favor?
Hi.
Close extensions, thank you.